Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Dearborn Heights City Council meeting that will begin called to order today at 6:02 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please take a roll call?
Yes. Hassan Ahmad.
Here.
Moby Dun.
Here. Sorry.
Nancy Brier.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Hassan Saab.
Here.
And Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Next up, we are going to have the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to have our very own Rose Trapepe from the E and Center here with us today to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for that, Rose. You want me to be seated? Next up, we have the Councilman Ahmad, who's going to lead us in the City Council Residence Recognition. I'm going to join the Councilman with this one. Every Councilman more than welcome. How you guys doing? Thank you guys for being here.
We're all welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Council Chair, Council Members, ladies and gentlemen, as the month of February comes to an end, we would be remiss not to celebrate Black History Month. Is this on? Please direct your attention to the screen for a short video highlighting some remarkable African-American individuals throughout history and our deeds for this evening.
We're going to figure it out.
Throughout our history, America has aspired to be a beacon of liberty. A place where all men and women are created equal, where anybody who works hard has a chance to get ahead. But those self-evident truths have never been self-executing, and every time, our founding promise has fallen short for any of us. Brave men and women have marched and organized and taken up the fight for justice to keep that promise for all of us.
One, two, three, four.
Council Chair, as we celebrate Black History Month, I am deeply honored to recognize and commend the remarkable efforts of the Black Student Union and its outstanding members at our local Annapolis High School. The Black Student Union, established in October 2022, stands as a testament to the dedication and vision of our African-American students. Their initiative to create a club that celebrates and promotes their culture is both inspiring and commendable. Since its inception, the Black Student Union has been a beacon of light in our community, actively engaging in various community service projects that have made a tangible difference in the lives of many. From Operation Big Bookbag, providing school supplies to the elementary students, to clothing drives for the less fortunate, their impact has been profound and far-reaching. Their commitment to service extends beyond our local community, as seen in their donation to the Help's On The Way Shelter and various Metro Detroit shelters. Their efforts in organizing food drives, Spirit Weeks for Black History Month, and educational initiatives like Black History Trivia and A Moment in Black History are not just events, they are transformative experiences that promote awareness and appreciation of African-American culture and history. Additionally, their involvement in fundraising activities such as the March of Dimes showcase their dedication to supporting important causes and making a positive impact on society. Looking ahead, their upcoming project to collect sanitary items for homeless women demonstrates their unwavering commitment to serving those in need and making our community a more compassionate and inclusive place for all. To the member of the Black Student Union, your passion, hard work, and commitment to service are truly outstanding. You are an inspiration to us all, and I am proud to stand here today to honor and celebrate your achievements. Thank you for your dedication and for your embodying the spirit of Black History Month. Your efforts are a testament to the power of unity, education, and service in building a brighter future for our community. Congratulations on all your accomplishments, and I look forward to witnessing your continued success and impact in the years to come.
Thank you so much. One more round of applause for Councilman Proton on that. Amazing job to this awesome organization, to the staff. I see we have our principal here with us at Annapolis. We have our, we have, we have some of our trustees also here with us, but I want to, I want you guys to know that bit of information, and she's probably going to be so upset with me. But initially, the Councilman was going to recognize trustee Windless, and she took it upon herself and said, you know, it needs to be the students, it needs to be this organization. I want them to get the recognition. And if you want to see true leadership, you know, really, I look at Mrs. Windless, and she does a phenomenal job, so let's recognize her and give her a round of applause. Congratulations to you guys, and I see continued success with you guys. And then the Councilman, you can go ahead and finish your, no, no, go ahead.
Dearborn Heights City Council Certificate of Appreciation presented to Annapolis High School Black Student Union. The City Council of Dearborn Heights proudly acknowledges and awards this certificate of appreciation to the Black Student Union at Annapolis High School in recognition of their outstanding commitment to community service, cultural celebration, and educational enrichment. Their efforts and dedication reflect the values of unity, compassion, and empowerment, making our community a better place for all. The City Council appreciates their exceptional leadership and service, signed by Council Chair Baydun, myself, all Council Members. (Applause). You're welcome. I don't know, right over there, over here?
I have, I take a picture up there.
Up there, better? Okay.
We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up.
(Inaudible)
We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) We were going to ask all you guys to do, to join up. (Inaudible) And we're going to have a few words with trustee Windless.
My hands will be quick. On the last day of Black History Month in 2024, I am blessed to be alive to witness the Dearborn Heights City Council honor the Annapolis High School Black Student Union and all of the positive initiatives they have accomplished since their conception. Black Student Unions are a key part of the Civil Rights Movement, with the first one being established in 1966. They serve as a safe, inclusive space for black, for the black student experience in colleges and high schools nationwide. In high schools specifically, they foster a sense of belonging and positive impact on academic success. Historically, these type of groups have been met with resistance, but we can be proud that our students are being met with love and community support. They have worked diligently to be beacons of light and hope in our community. They have also increased Black History Month celebrations in their school. These students are truly what it means to be the D7 difference, as our diversity is our superpower. Last, to kick off Women's History Month, I would like to say thank you to Dr. Prince for being the sponsor and supporting these students every step of the way. Your countless hours of dedication to this, to starting, running, and supporting this group have not gone unnoticed. You all have a lifelong fan and supporter in me, trustee Windless.
Council Chair. I thank you guys so much. Council Chair. Yes, sir. Let's take to make one remark. You know, being an Annapolis High School graduate of 1975, very proud of all of you, and I hope we'll be celebrating some of your accomplishments in future Black History Months. Thank you for all you do. Thank you. Any other Council Members?
Yeah, and I'd just like to echo what Councilman Wenzel said. I'm a 1977 graduate of Annapolis, and I remember back, we did not have one African-American student at Annapolis back then, so I'm very proud of you young people.
Amazing. Amazing. Congratulations to you guys. Mayor, would you like to say anything?
(Inaudible) Nice.
All right, guys, well, next up, we have presentation by Wayne County Commissioner David Knezek. I'll give you the round of applause, Commissioner. Round of applause.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and to those in attendance here today and watching at home, my name is David Knezek. I'm the Wayne County Commissioner for Dearborn Heights, Garden City, and Inkster. Appreciate the opportunity to come out here today. I noticed this presentation, folks were saying, well, what are you presenting today? This is just my generic come-out-and-check-in-with-folks, right? I try to come out quarterly, make sure that we're keeping the communication flowing. I also appreciate the fact that it forced me to put on a suit tonight, which reminded me that I need to go to the gym, so thank you for that, Councilman Baydun. Just some quick housekeeping for those in attendance and watching at home. If I can be of service in any way, please want you to reach out to my office via email. It's davidknezek@wayncity.com, D-A-V-I-D-K-N-E-Z-E-K@wayncity.com, or you can call my office at 313-224-0930. Just to provide a couple updates about what we have going on at the county here, or in the last few months, rather. One of the previous meetings, I had spoken about the funding that was coming from the Wayne County Parks Village dollars to support renovations to Van Houten Park. We had talked about the need to bring about an extension on those dollars. Of course, if you drive down Silver Lane and see the park right now, you see the progress that's being made there. The county was able to, at the end of last year, place a one-year extension on those dollars, just so that, again, everything can continue to move forward smoothly, which I believe that it is here in, in the city. For those who are checking your mailboxes on a daily basis, we do have a new newsletter that's going to be coming out here shortly and hitting mailboxes across the three communities that I represent. Couple things that we're highlighting in there that I also want to highlight for the folks in attendance here today. The first is, when I started this newsletter process, we told folks, give me feedback about what it is that I'm putting into the newsletters for you. We want to make sure that it is of greatest use and value and utility to others. So we get a lot of questions about roads, so we're going to have a new section in there that talks about whose road is it. It can get very, very confusing. I know the administration and I have a ton of conversations because it can be frustrating when you have residents calling in who are confused, frankly, because the system makes no sense, right? If you're traveling along Cherry Hill in the city of Dearborn Heights, this is a city road. Once you hit Inkster West, it becomes a county road, and so the county will be doing work. Inkster West, Dearborn Heights, folks will call me and say, why the heck are you stopping right here at our border? And again, just create some frustrations there. Cherry Hill, Evergreen, and some others. So we want to make sure that we can clarify, and then again, point out that the commitment that we've seen between the city and the county is to recognize that, at the end of the day, the residents don't care whose road it is, they just care about it getting fixed and getting done. And so, no matter whose it is, I think that the collaboration that I've seen, the conversation I've seen these last few years has been really positive on that front. Wanted to call attention to something that you might recognize that our treasurer has been talking about for some time last year, that was the Michigan Homeowner Assistance Fund. This was a fund that was set up and ran out of the Wayne County Treasurer's Office to try and help residents who might have been back due on their mortgages. It's something that, of course, hard times happen to everybody, it's not selective for any one person or group. And so I know that Treasurer Hicks Clayton was very outspoken on making sure to drive folks to the Michigan Homeowner Assistance Fund if they were in need of support for back owed mortgage or taxes or what have you. I try to do the same thing by way of direct communication to residents. So what I do every year is, I pull that foreclosure list from the county, I pull the three cities that I represent, we send a direct letter to the residents to say, we know that you're on the shortlist for foreclosure, we want to keep you in your home, here are the resources that we can provide to you to keep you there. We did that for Dearborn Heights residents when it was all said and done and that fund was totally expended. $673,205.33 that came back here to homeowners in Dearborn Heights to help them catch up on the mortgage payments that they had fallen.
That's 673,000?
673,000. Yes, Councilman.
Thank you. Amazing.
Another piece I want to talk about that I'm very proud and very grateful for the leadership of Wayne County Executive Warren Evans, our Deputy County Executive Asad Turfi, and our Chief Health Officer, Dr. Abdul El Sayed. We're all familiar with the opioid epidemic that's sweeping across the country. Again, doesn't discriminate against anybody, we're seeing opioid deaths continue to skyrocket here in Wayne County. One of the best things that we can do is to make those remediation strategies available quickly and easily to everybody. You may have heard of naloxone or Narcan, this is that nasal spray that, if you are in the process of overdosing, one quick hit of that Narcan in a couple seconds and you bounce right back out of that overdose. Folks usually, I'm sure our police officers and firefighters could attest to this, usually come up swinging and pretty upset because you've ruined the high, but you've saved their life in the process. And so what Wayne County is doing, we're making the single largest investment in opioid remediation strategies that's ever happened in the entire country. We're placing $3 million into a fund to create Narcan vending machines. It's exactly what it sounds like. In places of high traffic, could be a library, could be a city hall, it's a little vending machine of the Narcan boxes, so that you can take one, put it in your purse, the same way that we're telling people, you keep that hand sanitizer on you, the same way to fight the flu or COVID or help keep the germs off you. We're encouraging folks to start thinking the same way about the opioid epidemic and how we can fight back on that as well. That $3 million is going to fund 100 Narcan vending machines all across Wayne County. Wayne County, of course, has 43 communities, so at a minimum, one vending machine per community. In some communities where the population density is higher, you're going to see more. I would expect to see more than one here in the community of Dearborn Heights. We don't have the exact details on the locations of where they're going to be yet, we're still working through that with our public health professionals and epidemiologists, so stand by for more information on that Narcan investment. Another piece of feedback that folks are going to see in that newsletter, and again, the number one piece of feedback that we heard from everybody is, you're telling us a lot about what you did the last couple months, David, how about you tell me what's coming up for the next few months? And so the number one requested thing in that regard was your commission meetings and the council meetings. So we've pulled all of the commission meetings for 2024, all the council meetings for Dearborn Heights, Garden City, and Inkster, built it into this newsletter. Just because of that one request, though, we had to change what was a spring and fall newsletter and turn it into now a summer/winter newsletter. If I put it out in October, I don't have the dates yet for when the commission and council meetings are, that's why we've pushed it back here a couple months. And I need help from the audience on this one. Did I talk about the Dearborn Heights Panthers investment that I made last year, or did I just tease it at the time?
You did not.
I did it?
No.
Okay. So I talked a little bit last year how, one of the frustrations that I had as a commissioner, we're all given an office allotment, right? This is the allotment that you're using to communicate with residents, to pay your staff, office supplies, the whole nine yards. I always try to run a really efficient office, and for the last four years on the commission, I have come in under budget every single year. What happened to that money previously was they would take that money and just throw it back into the general fund, never to be seen again. The argument that I made and others on the commission made was, why are we being punished for running an efficient office if that office is supposed to support the residents of our community, whether it be communication or otherwise? If we're running it efficiently, can we invest that money back into the community and into nonprofit organizations? We were able to successfully convince the commission chair to do so, and so it really was serendipitous, and you were a part of this hand-in-glove, Councilman Baydun. I was going to end last year with $30,000 left over in my office allotment, and so we were allowed to do two nonprofit organizations, so split it in half, 15,000 bucks, and I called Councilman Baydun and I said, I need a nonprofit in Dearborn Heights, I'd really like to invest in the South End, and I know folks say, there's no North End/South End, it's one Dearborn Heights. I'm with you, but I know that areas of the South End get overlooked and have been overlooked by the commission historically. And so he had just come off of a communication with a gentleman who, at the time, was the president of the Dearborn Heights Raiders, pardon me, not the Raiders.
Redskins.
The Redskins, the other, the Dearborn Heights Redskins, who are talking about, we want to change the name of the organization, they've been the Redskins for over 50 years, we want to change the name, come more in line with the times, but darn it, it's going to cost a whole heck of a lot of money.
I promised him that I was going to help him find the money.
Yeah. So, so he got us connected, we sat down, and we went sort of line by line. We're going to keep the same colors as we had before, and I got a kick out of it personally, brought back some good memories, because the color scheme and the Redskins was the same color scheme and name that I had at St. Linus when I was growing up, and I remember when we changed to the Red Hawks. And so they informed me they wanted to change to the Dearborn Heights Panthers, keep the same color code, new stickers for the helmet, new practice jerseys, new game jerseys for the cheerleaders, new cheerleading outfits, new warm-up outfits, the whole nine yards. I had set $15,000 aside for it. We totaled it all up, 15,700 bucks. I said, if you do the 700, I'll do the 15 grand. We shook on it, and a couple months later, we had that 15,000 go to. So again, just, just a really great opportunity for, for public engagement and partnership, a little bit outside of the realm of, of what I think folks might think for a county commissioner, but the next piece too, something that I'm very excited about as well, they didn't, I didn't tell them that, I was going to call them out here today, but our new public safety committee that we have here in the community, I unfortunately had to inform them today, I had set up a meeting with SEMCOG this morning, the Southeastern Michigan Council of Government, to talk about what other communities are doing as it relates to public safety, student safety. I really can't commend this council enough for the steps that you're doing on prioritizing student safety in the community. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. Other communities are looking at doing this. But the next piece too, something that I'm very excited about as well, they didn't, I didn't tell them that I was going to call them out here today, but our, our new public safety committee that we have here in the community. I unfortunately had to inform them today. I had set up a meeting with SEMCOG this morning, the Southeastern Michigan Council of Government, to talk about what other communities are doing as it relates to public safety, student safety. I really can't commend this council enough for the steps that you're doing on prioritizing student safety in the community. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. Other communities are looking at doing this. I reached out to SEMCOG to say, help paint me a picture of how other communities have done it, so that we can streamline that process and get those dollars out into the community as fast as possible. Last piece, of course, I know it's a hot topic, always is when I come here, Ekoros Creek. We talked about last year, I'll just provide a brief reminder for everybody that when the Wayne County Commission, the Wayne County Executive received the ARPA money, $339 million, we had done solicitations to the communities to say, what is it that you're looking to invest money in? Are there things that we can go 50/50 on, the whole nine yards? We were able to do a $10 million investment in Ekoros Creek. Now, that was last year, right? Winter time hits, you're not doing a ton of work on the creek. At that time, we were able to have a kickoff meeting in January, right here in these chambers with city leadership as well. Now, I want to be clear, that's step one of a multi-pronged process, right? We wanted to get together with elected leaders, the Ekoros Creek Commission and others, to come up with a plan and a communication strategy, because frankly, the only way this is going to succeed is if we all work together and if we're all on the same page. It's going to be a challenge. There's no doubt about it. It's going to be a challenge. When you have decades of disinvestment and decades of pushing something off to the side, the challenge becomes even greater, right? And so what we have already done, the county has contracted with the Spicer Group. They're going to be the ones leading this remediation effort across the Ekoros Creek. They've broken up that creek into a number of different, what they're calling reaches, reaches one through, I believe it's 12. I could be misspeaking. And then they're starting at the end and working backwards. Some folks have said to me along the way, David, $10 million, how much is going to Dearborn Heights? David, $10 million, are you starting at the end and working your way down or vice versa? The way that I respond to that is, if we gave money to the Great Lakes, St. Clair Shores, and Oscoda, and Harrisville, they wouldn't say, well, how much is coming to Oscoda? How much is coming to you? I understand why we would ask that. But the money's going to the Great Lakes. Let's make it all better. So when we gave this $10 million to the creek, it was to the creek. The creek runs through multiple communities. And if we were to just do remediation strategies in one or two, it would most certainly make it worse for all the rest, which is a good roll into the next piece. Where are we starting and how are we rolling? We're starting where it dumps into the, the river and working our way backwards. The reason for that is if I started upstream and cleared out a bunch of debris or cleared out a bunch of breaks, that would release all the water and others, and it would flow downstream into Dearborn Heights where it's the lowest, and make it worse for Dearborn Heights residents. So Dearborn Heights is part of reach number three through seven. Reach number one, reach number two, these are already in flight. We're going to hit reach number three, four, five, six, seven. That's going to cover all throughout the south end of Dearborn Heights there. We have tentatively, I'm going to say this like three times, because sometimes I leave here and folks hear, hear different things from what I actually say. Tentatively, 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 tentatively are slated to begin in June. So the question becomes, what happens between now and June? I don't want folks in the south end of the heights waking up one day saying, why is there this, this, this high low or what have you in, in my backyard, right? So we're doing a postcard strategy where we're mailing out to everybody individually. We've been soliciting feedback from everybody to help us understand what sort of fences or hardened structures are in your backyard? What are we going to have to work around? What are we going to have to move in order to get that heavy equipment in there? And then we're doing a door-to-door strategy to make sure that, you know, some folks don't want to respond to a survey on the internet. Some folks might not, or might misplace that postcard. Sending out folks and having that door-to-door strategy, we think is going to make sure that, that that communication is improved. And again, for me, that communication is paramount. If we want to do this right and get this right, it's something that I'm committed to and believe that we can do even better. So hopefully that provides you a little update of, of where we're at, where the money came from, how we got to where. But I'm sure there's questions, and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Commissioner, great job, great presentation. I, I do have a couple of questions. My first question is, I see you brought up Van Holen Park. I keep hearing different, different things, different, and it doesn't really matter. As long as Van Holen Park is taken care of. I'm hearing that, you know, at one point, your office and the colony agreed to 300, 400,000. Then I'm hearing that we're really, we've only received 100,000. I don't know, but I know that means you had a discussion, I think you even brought it up over here in this meeting, and I believe you told me the number was just a little, I think, north of 300? Or could I be mistaken?
I think what I was referring to at the time, and I might need some help from folks of the city, when I was saying the 300, I believe that was what I would call a landed cost. So between the county, between whatever GF, general fund that the city was putting in, whatever CDBG money that the city might have been putting in, that was the landed cost for the entire project.
Okay.
The county's share is, is north of 100,000.
Okay. And then my next question is, you said in your presentation that the city has requested things that they want it done. Can you share with us what those items are?
For which piece now?
For regarding the ARPA funds.
ARPA funds. So the, the process that the county instituted, again, the county had, I think, $339 million. Rather than saying, and I think Dearborn Heights got 24 million, right?
Right.
So Dearborn Heights gets 24, Garden City gets their number, Inkster gets their number. What Wayne County said was, instead of us saying, well, this is our 339 million, we're going to spend it on whatever we want as a county. There was this recognition of, this is one-time money. We're probably never going to see an influx of cash like this again. So let's talk about doing big and transformative things. And let's recognize that we, as a county, we overlay with every single one of the cities across the county perfectly. So we've got a little skin in the game too. And so rather than going about spending it on our own, we solicited from all the communities, send us a list of projects that you want us to consider as a county. We will go through those, we'll see if there's any alignment with what the county priorities are, and see if there's any opportunities to align their funding and, and split it halfway. I'll give you an example, and I, I believe I talked about it at a previous council meeting. The, the thought at one time was, if there are nine communities touching Ekoros Creek, and we think we need $10 million to do some help here, let's ask each one of those communities to chip in 500 grand from their ARPA money. Get us to 4.5 million. I think I did that math right. And then the county would come in and do the other 5.5. So instead of each community having to shoulder this huge $10 million burden between the three of, or the nine of them, the county would come in and take half. What we ended up doing at the end of the day was, the county did the entire 10 million. We did not ask for any matching dollars from the cities. But process-wise, sent in from the city, county looked for alignment, and then we moved forward with those decisions.
Great, great. Thank you, Commissioner.
Sure.
Anyone else here have a question?
So when is the work going to start?
Tentatively, tentatively, tentatively.
In June.
June.
But that doesn't mean, you know, it might start in August.
Yeah.
And guess what? It might start in August because they're delayed.
Maybe May.
Maybe May?
Maybe May.
You know, it's, it's, yeah, I think if you drive down Warren and you hit Merriman, I think there's a great example of, you know, what happens here, right? Where we had broke ground on that bridge project there. We thought it was supposed to be operating on a certain timeline. As soon as they got into the ground, there was a ton of pipes, wires, things that were not in the blueprints. I know it's probably not the real lingo, but the blueprints, if you will, and that delayed the project, pushed it back. We ran up against winter. We're not looking to finish that until April of this year.
If the county was lucky to still have Ali Deeb, we would have never ran into those issues. We would have been prepared.
Council Chair?
Yes, sir, Councilman.
Thank you. Commissioner, I was at that meeting that we had here in council chambers about a month ago about the, this project. Is that on YouTube or something that the residents could watch? Because it was a very informative meeting, and there's a lot of things in there that the residents should know about this project.
I don't believe it was recorded. If you let me sit down and then come back at some point, I've, I've got my computer with me here. There is a website that includes all of the materials that have been mailed to residents, PowerPoint presentations, talks about the project in its entirety, the communities that we're looking to partner with. So frankly, Councilman, that's something that I should have brought up in my presentation.
Well, go ahead. Why don't you step up and grab it?
Okay, okay.
Not dwell about it.
Ask more questions while I'm doing it.
I want to thank you, Commissioner, for all your work and all you've done.
Thank you, Councilman.
I was going to fill the time. I was going to fill the time.
Also, while you got, while you're up there, I know that the city has requested for some things that we want to done as a city. Can you share what those projects are?
For?
For the city of Dearborn Heights. We requested, you stated that we have requested certain things.
Correct.
And I, I'd like to know what it is that the city wanted to be done, or think, because, you know, potentially, these issues are still occurring here in our city. You know, the Ekoros Creek is definitely at the top of our list. But I would also like to know what we have requested so that we can put it in the back of our minds and not forget what they are.
If you let me get through this, I will get to that, because I also have it on my computer too.
Great. Wish you the head on your notes, though, sir.
Yeah, yeah, my apologies, Councilman. So the website, Councilman Wenzel, is N B E C D.
Hang on one second.
I'm going to hit you twice with it, maybe three times. N B E C D dot com. For those who serve, November, Bravo, Echo, we'll keep going. N B E C D dot com. You can see, again, news and updates about where we're at, the partnerships that we have, maps. I, I wish I could get it to load, but I'm not connected to wifi at the moment. And then walks through, again, the specific remediation strategies that folks are trying to do. Folks will say, well, are we doing dredging? Are we making it deeper? Are we making it wider? That's not part of this effort. That would be way more than what the 10 million can do. Clearing out all that debris, stabilizing the bank, doing the bank erosion remediation, and then some of the tree clearing pieces are what we're looking at for this year. And then some of the drain cleanouts as well.
Council Chair, I don't want to prolong this, it's too much longer.
One last question, one last question. What happens? Let's just say, we're, we're working, we're starting at the beginning, before we get to Dearborn Heights, like you said, it just becomes a lot more costly. It becomes a lot more costly. We enter into Dearborn Heights and we're like, oh my God, we have no more money.
Good question. No, it's a good question. So I'd say a couple of things. The first two reaches that we're doing have very few commercial or residential properties that are on them. So we're not expecting them to be expensive at, at a magnitude that would have that happen, Councilman. But let's say that it did. Let's pretend that it did. One of the things that the county made sure to do with that $339 million is we didn't spend it all the way down to zero. We didn't obligate every dollar. We recognize that some of these projects, whether it's, you know, bigger cleanup than what we had anticipated, cost of goods, cost of labor, cost of services, could be higher than what we anticipated. We set a pot of that money to the side to be able to come back and backfill anytime there may be a shortage on any of these projects. I'll give you an example. In Garden City, Garden City had wanted to do some remediation to the Radcliffe Center. This is one of their community centers just off the Ford Road on Radcliffe. They had gotten, I believe it was $4 million. They had put up, I think, $1 or $2 million worth of matching money to pull that $4 million down. They started on the project, storms hit, roof got a big leak. Now they got a $2 million roof replacement they have to do. In that case, they come back to the county. We get to reassess the viability of the project. Yes, it's still viable. Here's the $2 million that we've pulled out of that sort of risk and reserve fund, if you will. And then the community was able to move forward.
Risk and reserve fund. I know you've got a lot of connections there.
An example, an example. That's not what it's actually called. It's an example.
I know, I know. We're going to figure out how to tap into a little bit more of that, huh?
Sure, sure.
And then, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, let me pull that up.
Two things that I took away from this meeting that I thought were pretty important. One of me just mentioned, access to the creek is, is a problem in Dearborn Heights. There, there are some cities that have just a couple dozen homes on the creek. Dearborn Heights has over 250 homes on the creek. And there's always a question that people call us and say, hey, a tree fell on, from the creek onto my fence. County's got to pay for my fence. I brought up the question, you know, where, where does the county property end and the residence property begin? And the answer I was given by Wayne County was, the county owns very little of the creek, if any. The homeowners own all the property to the middle of the creek, and the property owners on the other side of the creek take it up from there. So the homeowners actually own all the creek, and the businesses that are on the creek own that creek, but it's maintained by Wayne County.
The, the other thing that I'll say, Councilman, too, is it gets back to what I said earlier about the roads, right? There's, there's the reality of who owns what, and then there's what I think is the obligation I have as an elected official to do something about it. And so one of the issues that we're trying to work through, frankly, in Lansing, is that $5,000 cap that the county has per mile along the creek to do spend on, on remediation, right? That number needs to be way higher if we want to do anything helpful or transformative. And so I'll use as an example where, you know, you shoot me a text, you give me a call, here's the address, here's where the, the tree's at. I'm able to get the county to go out there and, and clear it out. You call me twice on that, we've blown through that $5,000 that frankly, we, we should be capped legally at. But as the third and the fourth and the fifth call come through, we make the push, we make the advocacy, we do what we can to try and get folks out there. So we're blowing past it already. It'd be nice if state law was, was in alignment with what we're trying to do. And again, what, what I want folks to take away from what you just said is, we can say the county owns this, the city owns that, the resident owns this, the whole nine yards. If you have a question or you need some help, give me a call. We're going to try and work it out.
Can you give me those last questions that I had for you?
I'm, I'm sorry, Councilman.
Before we get to, we got to wrap this up.
Sure. You wanted to know what the city had applied for?
Correct.
Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 12, 12 items. First one, environmental and watershed flood management study. Second, a lead service line, or lead service line replacement. Third, Wallaceville Schoolhouse project. Fourth, storm sewer cleaning and video inspection. Fifth, fire station headquarters replacement. Sixth, a library update. Seven, 911 dispatch upgrades. Eight, animal control updates. Nine, a new city hall. 10, a service management system. 11, Ekoros Creek debris removal and flooding. And then finally, drinking water main replacements.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner, thank you so much for always going above and beyond, and we appreciate you for your unwavering support to this community, to the residents, to all of Wayne County, and to the United States. As a man who's served our country, we thank you for everything that you have done. And your time is no longer needed here.
Thank you, Councilman. I, I, I'll end with, I apologize. I can't stay for the whole thing because I do have the, the hype dinner this evening and the Garden City Volunteer Recognition Event. This is what happens when you represent three cities instead of one.
Yeah.
But I, I want to start or end by apologizing. I should have started with giving a big thank you to our city clerk and our clerk staff for running a phenomenal election. And so clerks, send your hats off.
Thank you so much for your time. Thank you for coming here tonight.
Just say thank you.
I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. You guys don't know, I, I appreciate David very much. He's been a huge role model of mine. Maybe not in the last couple of weeks, because he hasn't really checked in on me much, but I appreciate David very, very much, really.
You're in, you're in Mexico.
Yeah. Yeah. Everybody on Facebook knew that too, David.
All right, guys. Next up, we have the agenda approval.
Council Chair?
Councilman Ahmad, glad to have you back.
Council Chair.
I'm sorry. One more, I'm so sorry. The Councilman Wenzel did ask me if he could get up and speak.
Couple minutes.
Just, just about two minutes. So we're going to stuck the clock on him. No, just joking. He just wants to break ground today with some wise words and kind words.
Tom Wenzel, Tulane Street, no. Thank you, Councilman, Council Chair Moe Baydune, for giving me this opportunity. That, that's a tough act to follow. That guy's a great speaker, I'll tell you. Thanks for giving this opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you for everyone coming out here tonight and for all those watching on Zoom, cable, and YouTube. I've lived in Dearborn Heights my whole life, 67 years. And I know many, that many recent events have not shed positive images on our city. It's unfortunate because our reputation is at stake. A reputation that we've worked hard for, that took over 60 years to achieve. It's time to start acting more positive and in a professional way. Excuse me here. There are eight elected officials sitting up at the table here. No matter which one of us brings something to the table, it should be looked at in a constructive way and not met with hostilities. All matters should be looked into respectfully, and decisions made that are in the best interest of our city and the residents of Dearborn Heights. Once again, we are elected officials, and we deserve to be treated with respect by all city employees. Speaking of respect, residents deserve respect also. We can respect them by providing with, with them with all the services that they're entitled to and the services they deserve. There has been talk about recalls. As a matter of fact, there has been suggestions that the entire city council be recalled. In the meantime, we have a city that needs to be attended to. It doesn't matter if any of us are here in the next couple of weeks or not. Our city needs, and the residents need us to work together today. We desperately need some positive stories being told about our city in the media. I'm thinking this might be a start. That being said, I'm extending my hand, not in friendship, not in forgiveness, but in a challenge of cooperation and working together for our residents.
All due respect to you, Tom Wenzel.
Tom, there's actually nine elected officials up here. You said eight.
Oh, did I say eight?
Yeah, there's nine.
There's eight.
Yeah, she's an elected official.
I mean, he's talking about everybody. You know, while I'm up here, I'd like to take this opportunity to extend an invitation to our community to come together and, for a memorial service for Alexa Frederick tomorrow evening. Alexia was a student at OWB's Middle School and has recently passed away. The details of this event can be found on my Facebook page. This is an event taking place tomorrow night. So if you want to know more about the details, it's on my Facebook page. Thank you again, Council Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. And while, while we're here, while, while we're here, let's do a moment of silence for Alexia, please.
Good man, Tom.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. That's amazing. And I, and I definitely echo everything you just stated there.
Thank you.
Next up on here, we have agenda approval.
Council Chair?
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the agenda for the regular meeting of February 29th, 2024 as submitted.
Second motion made by Councilman Ahmad, second by Councilman Conston. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair here.
All right. I'm going to have Councilman Ahmad, and then we'll have Councilman Saab after.
Just have a question about 11B from the mayor about the Warren Valley Gaunt, Gaunt Court liquor license. It's the same resolution we.
Council Chair, I was going to actually comment on that one. You just, you have another item? I was going to comment on that one.
Okay. Well, let me ask his question, and then, and then I'll have you go ahead.
Ask your question, Councilman.
We just, we approved this resolution back in September about.
I'll discuss it afterward.
Okay.
Do you have anything else, Councilman?
That's it.
Okay.
Real quick. Councilman Saab, do you have anything?
Yes, I'd like to move items 27, 28, and 33.
So that'd be, that'd be.
That's quota group.
That'd be claims. This is agenda item.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay. It's okay. And I think you brought it up to me, and I was just, I was thinking of agenda. A motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Conston. Mayor, do you want to speak on agenda item first?
Yes.
Or do you want to save until, because it doesn't seem like anybody's.
No, I can speak now, so we can remove it, actually. I'm, I'm going to request to remove that item. A reason why I put it on, it was at the last minute. I was talking to the attorney. So the liquor commission asked for a, a separate letter, but we did send them that. So while we're waiting for the liquor commission to respond back, that, that was acceptable. They did respond, that was acceptable yesterday. So I'd like to see if we can remove it. So they did accept the letter from September.
Madam Court, can we have 11B removed on the request of the mayor? So Councilman Ahmad, would you like to re, would you like to amend your motion?
So I would like to amend my motion by removing 11B from the agenda.
Thank you, Councilman Conston. Will you like to second that? Thank you. Any other discussions? Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Conston. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next up, we have approval of minutes.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
Moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes from the regular meeting of February 13th, 2024 as submitted.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up on the agenda, we have public hearings and comments on agenda items only. Please state your name, the city resident, the street you live on. I know, before we move forward, Madam Clerk, I know we had somebody that had iPhone, had their hand up. I think they wanted to speak. Unfortunately, they weren't, you know, I don't know if you saw that, but iPhone, if you wanted to speak, this would be on public hearings and comments for, on the agenda items only. If you want to have public comment, that would be all the way at the end. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, Vince Strapkowski, Columbia Street. I want to comment on item 8B.
8B?
8B. This is for the salary increases of directors. We're only a couple of months out of the new budget. I think if it's possible, if they could wait, I know everybody needs a raise, but let's get a new budget going in here instead of constantly beating the crap out of this one that we're on. That's what I wanted to bring up. But I think if they could wait, and also, we have firefighters that haven't had a contract in over two years. So I'd like to see that getting settled. I know it's an arbitration right now, but let's take care of our firefighters also, if we can get that taken care of. And also, I want to go to item 14C, public comments. There's a lot of times that the mayor has taken off prior to the public comments. And I know your busy schedule and stuff like that, but you think on council meeting nights that you would clear your schedule so you could take questions from the audience. So I would appreciate it the mayor would stick around. I know you're an invited guest. You don't have to be here, but if you're going to be here, stick it out. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't, sir, please state your name, the city resident, and the street you live on.
Hassan Basijhan Highway again. How much time I have?
Two minutes.
Two minutes. Well, I want to also talk about 8B. I'm going to use my time. Tom Wenzel, you'll always have my respect. Thank you for this statement today, and you always do a good job. So I want to. So I wanna contradict the statement by Vince a little bit here, he's my good friend. Eight B about the raise for the head department, I mean, I've seen the list. I don't know what direction you guys are going with it, but I would like to add the building department as well, if that will go through, maybe one of you that can add this to the.
We can amend that.
You can amend it if you guys ever decide about it. Yes, the budget is coming, but I think we should take in consideration some positivity coming from the administration at this point. I wanna go with the same line that Councilman Wenzel brought, that we need to start look at things differently with some positivity here. We been in the media and what's going on in the city, so let's take this, I mean, put the politic a little bit on the side. These head departments, I mean, desperately probably in need for that raise, and by the time we get to the budget, going in and out and discussing it, it's gonna take a long time. So maybe these guys need the budget to boost them a little bit, to provide more to this city. I mean, the services, it's not at its best at this point here. So I would like you, please, to consider it and look into it. Hopefully, that will be an open door for more positivity coming into the city. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Basie.
Any other residents? So Lapointe, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street you live on, which I probably memorized you in Zohair.
Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Regarding the salaries, eight B, I agree with Vince that really this could probably just maybe get pushed to the budget season so that we can kind of look at all of those salaries at the same time, since it isn't all the directors, it's not all the deputies, it's not all the other non-union employees. Look at it all at once, I think is a good idea. But I think that it should also be pushed because a good portion of those positions have seen raises multiple times over the last four or five years. I pulled up historical data and looked at it going back to, I think, it was at least five years, whatever it was. Some of them have seen as much as their salary doubled since in the last five years, and now an extra raise, which I'm not saying it's not needed because inflation's crazy and we all need raises. I'm all for especially those lower positions getting raises, but like, I just saw a news article that says a living wage in Michigan right now, you have to be making fifty-five thousand dollars a year. And that's just to afford the basics. And I am sure most of our, like, run-of-the-mill employees probably need to get a boost to just hit that living wage. So I would hope that before we can keep pushing everybody that's already at that top up, that we can try and bring up some of those people from the bottom so that we don't have as much disparity in salaries. That's all. Thank you.
Anyone else out in the audience?
Council Chair.
I have something to say, but it's as a resident, so should I go up there?
No, you can speak from your chair.
Okay. Right. Tom Wenzel, Tulane Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. I'm speaking as a resident.
You don't gotta say anything today, just you can speak.
Speaking as a resident. Very quickly, I'm gonna speak about the I N C, the Parks and Recreation, the Van Houten Park project. We're spending, not our monies, but monies accumulated throughout different entities, over a million dollars on the Van Houten Park. And I know it needed to be done, and I'm just hoping, speaking as a South End resident, living there my whole life, I hope that the next million dollars goes toward the South End for projects of that, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I second that, and I'm gonna be echoing you all day. I know that now we have iPhone here on Zoom. Madam Clerk, if you'd like to unmute iPhone, thank you. Thank you, sir. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street you live on.
Good afternoon, Hassan Ayun, P O Box one-one-three-two, Dearborn, Michigan, four-eight-one-two-one. I just wanted to tell you guys, you know, good afternoon. How you doing, Councilman Ayun? Tom Wenzel, I appreciate what you said, and I think the city needs to move forward without the drama, without the litigation.
Sir?
Hold on.
Is he speaking on agenda item, because this isn't public, this isn't.
I understand, agenda item, where there are any directors to get any extra money. I think at this time, you guys should sit there and wait for the budget, because every time you guys pass something, it always goes to litigation, and the city's always losing money. So at this time, I'm asking you guys to table this until the budget comes, and whoever you want to give a raise to during the budget time, just give a raise to. Because what it looks like, every time the city moves forward, there's litigation. Like, there's two directors, then you guys came back, and you said the two directors were on organizer, you guys didn't want to have them into litigation, and now they're in litigation. It doesn't, doesn't make sense. Like, there's certain stuff, you guys have to understand that when the city approves something, approve it when there's a budget. There's no budget, there's no raise. How do we know that the city can pay this amount of money? Do we all know that? No. We have to look at the budget and then approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Ayun.
You're welcome.
Have a good day. Anyone else on Zoom? Seeing none, Madam Clerk? Neither do I. Anyone else in the audience? Next up, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Sob.
Move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved current claims and A C H wire transfers six dash one through six dash sixty-nine as submitted.
Second motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman, before you start, I know you're gonna read numbers. Let me get my notes ready. Just read me which ones they are, not just the numbers, please.
Sure. It's gonna be twenty-six, which is the quota group.
Hang on one second.
I'm sorry, twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven and twenty-eight. What are those?
The quota group.
Quota group.
And then thirty-three.
Hold on, let me write these down, thirty-three. What is that?
Which is the perf CO S M I P says, ten thousand six hundred dollars.
What is that?
Some police training out of state. And I'd like, and the comment I have on this is that this was denied with a resolution that we put forward on the night there's litigation, I won't talk about it, but this should be a part of litigation too, we shouldn't approve it. And then I also have a question on number twenty-six. We have a study session on the canines, but is this the dog that's currently available with, with the police officer in the city that's getting the training, and not the other two dogs that were, that were supposed to be coming? Is that correct? Mayor?
Uh, Mayor?
No.
Okay, finish.
Number three for Mr. Deeb's AMD Engineering. I see the dates here go back to last month, I thought we approved them for, as a full-time in salary. February, okay.
Anything else, Councilman?
That's it.
Your question directed to the mayor is what, again?
About twenty-six, about the canine training, that's the dog that was with a former officer, Officer Shamy. That's the dog that we're getting training on. The other two, we have a study session for them.
Okay, Mayor?
Council Chair?
Yes, Mayor, go ahead.
Okay, so the canine is for the dog that we currently have, we don't have the other two dogs yet, so that's not even in the works, so the canine training is for the, for Twix, the current dog.
Okay, thank you.
And item twenty-seven and twenty-eight, Council Chair, I sent you for Koda, I mean, we're using the service, you know, for this, for the subpoena, so we have to pay our bills. And I sent you, and the clerk also has a copy of, we did go out for quote, and I did send that on one-twenty-three-twenty-four, and also I.
Was ICC'd on that? Because I don't recall receiving it.
Yes, Council Chair, I sent that to you on, let me see here. I sent that to you also on, you have that from Mr. Farina also?
No.
That was on one eighteen, twenty-twenty-four.
One eighteen?
Twenty-twenty-four.
What was the subject line?
Koda, K O D A, Group Agreement.
Council Chair.
So that's the one that, you know, I did mention at the last meeting, I mean, I can tell you, right now, the police department did go out for quote, you know, I mean, for trying to get, you know, good bids on this. There was three companies that bid on it, and Koda was the best one, and that's the one that they picked. And it is in a memorandum that, that was sent to you, Council Chair, and the clerk also has that.
Madam Clerk, did we go out for bid on that?
I'm looking at it right now, it just looks like it was a, it's a call from, microphone. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Well, actually, Madam Clerk, hold off, let the mayor finish.
Okay, okay.
So the clerk has that also, and we sent it to her on one-eighteen, and you, Council Chair, and it was resent again.
Let me see. Question is, did it go out for bid? Was it put on RFP, it's online?
It's actually for services, so it was, it went up for bid for, for these, and these three companies responded. And it's in an email that we sent to Council Chair.
I don't think it ever went through counsel. So we didn't have it, and yes, the mayor did.
Okay, so hold on, guys, hold on, let's just hold off.
For service, Council Chair.
There seems like there's always this back and forth. Why don't we just bring Koda back in front of us, let us approve it, and go ahead and just move on with your building?
It was for services, Council Chair, so.
I mean, if it's anything over fifteen hundred dollars, we always go out for bids. So I mean, if it went up for bids, and you can, you can show the proof that it went up for bids, put it back in front of the council, because it seems like every week I keep hearing about those quota thing. I mean, at the end of the day, I think we all want to move forward. Bring it back in front of council, let the council approve it, let's pay Koda.
Seventy-five dollars for service, seventy-five dollars, you know, for.
Council Chair.
Go ahead, Mayor, are you done?
Council Chair. Seventy-five dollars for service.
Hang on. Mayor, are you done?
Yes.
Okay, before I have you go.
You know, seventy-five dollars per service.
Okay. The seventy-five dollars could be added up, though.
No, I understand, but it was the total bill for the first one, but it kept getting deferred. The first one was twelve, one thousand two hundred and seventy-five.
I know, but it has been less than a year, we're already at three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, so it way exceeds the fifteen hundred dollar mark by double, more than double. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to silence you.
Oh, no, 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 that's okay. On the eighteenth, Council Chair asked I forward this email to you. The email states, below states it, this is another copy of this contract. Unfortunately, while an agreement may exist, it was never brought before council for approval. Should it be appropriate for us to hold that agreement in our office as it has never been presented?
Thank you.
So that's why we did not have it at that time.
Let's keep it brief, I want to, I want to wrap this up.
Council Chair, I asked the mayor at the last meeting if there was any conflict of interest or relationship to this company's owner, and the mayor said no. And I would like for this contract and the way it was bid it out to be investigated by an outside agency.
Okay.
There definitely is a relationship, and there definitely is a conflict.
Okay.
Council Chair.
Just out of curiosity, Council Chair.
Hang on one second, Roger, please go to the chair, I'm gonna have the Councilman Ahmad, then I have Roger next.
So, but my question is, does this contract has to come for us for approval or not?
Yes.
No? They're saying no.
No, it does. It's if it exceeds over fifteen hundred dollar mark, if money's being spent over fifteen hundred dollars, does, that's what our charter states. I mean, what's, what's, what's the difference if you guys did bring it in front of council and ask for their approval? Guys, you know what we'd be doing right now? We'd be avoiding the last four times of paying Koda. We would have paid Koda. Just bring it in front of the council, let's just, we all just talked about wanting to have a good relationship here. I'm all for opening hands. Mr. Basie, I'm all for opening good hands. Councilman Wenzel, I'm all for having go-bid. Bring it in front of council, let the council provide it, let's stop fighting and bickering over this. But really, I don't want to spend every single meeting, you know, transfers and current claims. I can tell you something, Roger, one hundred percent, we've went out for bids on services. This would not be the first time.
We went through litigation for two months about that issue with the amendment, the charter amendment from two thousand and seven, and there are certain things within the charter does not have to be going out to the council, although these service contracts. However, I can re-bring all those memos I've sent to you, to the city council for the issue, but you're right, we don't have to fight about everything. There's some things we can work and cooperate and bring it to you, it's not, it's not a main issue. I don't want to slow down us doing the work, we want to follow the charter. What I was gonna talk about, I, Councilman Sob mentioned some things, and I didn't know if he had any evidence of supporting documentation to put out a statement that, you know, you've got ties to conflict of interest. I don't, I don't know if there's anything to support that, that he has, but I would like to see it if he could.
We can talk about it.
Yeah.
As long as there's an outside agency investigating it, not the department.
Okay. All right, and then you talked about, like, Vince, number thirty-three, you said.
Number thirty-three was for, I guess we're, you know, we got a cease and desist order against us to speak on anything, but their resolution on the same day this item was on, and we denied it, and it should be part of litigation.
Well, I, I think it's, you're talking about sending our, one of our police to a course, right? I think it's in, at Boston University.
It's the interim chief, it's for Chief Swope.
Right. And I know, I know, I'm speaking to excellent firefighters, I know Bill went out to a course at Harvard, and if we're sending our officers, I think he was one of the few, I think one of, the only ones selected from all the fire departments in the state of Michigan that went out.
Phil's amazing.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Phil is remarkable.
Brilliant, man. And Kevin is one of the, I think the only ones selected, one of the few selected from Michigan to go to this course at the best schools in the country, Boston University.
Great, thank you, Roger.
So I think that it's something that's worth giving recognition to both our firefighters and our police officers.
Thank you, thank you, Roger. Any other discussion?
Council Chair, real quick, real quickly. Through the Council Chair, could I ask the mayor, who was processing these subpoenas in the past?
Mayor? I'm, I'm not sure. Oh. Yeah, we, what happened was the state prosecutors approached me initially, and I think, June, we had a lot of officers leaving, they couldn't get hold of the officers. And it is difficult when officers go to different precincts to get them to come back, so we couldn't find them, it was a lot of confusion. The state brought it to my attention, and then we looked out for bids for different agencies that can do that and get it to the officers to get them to court. The judges complained, I think the state had about four cases dismissed because the officers weren't present, weren't showing up. I myself have had to step in with the chiefs in different precincts to get these officers to come to court, and we've had to do it ourselves since we don't have the agency anymore doing the work, but that's what the agency was doing. A lot of officers leave, it's really hard finding them, tracking them down, getting them to court, and there's a lot of pressure on all the prosecutors, state and city. That's why.
Council Chair, just one more statement. I, I was told, and I don't have anything to back it up, but that there was like redundant subpoenas being issued, sort of like two or three for a car accident that they only needed one for, but they subpoenaed three people instead of just the one that they needed. Is that, is there anything, a way we can check that to see if there's been like an increase of the number of subpoenas per incident?
When, when I started, the room upstairs on the second floor, and I'm gonna do, I keep my statistics every week from my, when I started in May to the current time, all that we do in court, and I'm gonna present it what we're doing in March, and I keep all our defaults, all our offices, everything that shows up, I keep the stats on them. But we had offices lined up in the courtroom that were on the night shifts, that were staying till eleven or twelve, some till one o'clock. We got rid of that, we bring only officers we need for court, we get them out quickly because I put them as a priority over the lawyers to get them out, because I know how to get them out because I know how hard they work and their night shifts and things like that. So that is a priority to us. So no, we don't waste our resources on officers coming to court. I screen them, we check them, Hussein and I, and we make sure that they're ready and they're ones we need for court. OWI cases, traffic cases. We've had a number of ninety, ninety-two miles an hour tickets being issued. We just issued today a direction to the officers, get that reckless driving ticket to these guys. We're not going to do, you know, the limited ones. So that's what we're working on.
Thank you, Roger.
Speeding is not something we tolerate.
Council Chair.
Yeah.
Also to, uh, just piggyback on that comment, uh, Mr. Farina for Councilman Wenzel, the previous prosecutor, he would actually drag a lot of people into court. And there's people that would, would wait for hours. And there's officers that have been here mid, they were working midnight shift. And, you know, with my open door policy, a lot of officers came to my office telling me that, that they're not, they're not prioritizing the officers. They need to go to sleep. You know, some of them were working, you know, till seven, eight o'clock in the morning and then have to wait like three, four hours for their court. And yet they have to go home, drive, you know, working eighteen, nineteen hours a day, you know, with the court. So that's some of the stuff that we're streamlining. We're making sure that we're not wasting city resources. And the previous prosecutor, he would drag sometimes all the ordinance officers. And there's nobody on the street from ordinance and few of police officers. And sometimes the building director were present, you know, at the court waiting. You know, so there was a lot of city resources were wasted in the past. So this is some of the stuff that we're streamlining. And also your comment about the subpoenas, I'm looking at them right here. You can, you can see that for different people, they're not two, the same people on these subpoenas. So if you can, if you look, if you look down on the names, they have different names. You can just go and just check them out.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Any other discussions on this, guys?
Council?
Yep.
Just real quick, um, I just did a, did a quick search. And part of our policies and procedures do mention that professional services such as furnished by appraisals, accountants, architects, lawyers, realtors, engineers, and others of similar professions shall be authorized by appropriate action of the majority of the council. And such elections shall be made from a roster maintained by the mayor of qualified persons or firms interested in employment by the city.
Great.
Now, I do wanted to mention that. And also I know in the past, this was before this administration, that there was, um, I, it was a former comptroller that was signing engagement letters. And it was brought forward to the council that that should be brought to council before implementation.
So Mayor, it doesn't seem like there's a big issue here. Put quota back on the next agenda.
We, we have, no, we have the, uh, I, I appreciate what the clerk has said, but it's not completely accurate. I will forward my memos and explanation of it because we took time diligently to research it.
It's from.
And diligently when this issue came up in September by, uh.
Not sure.
And it's from Policies and Procedures five oh one.
Yeah, but I, I'm going by the charter. I, I understand the policies and procedures, but there's a conflict. That's why we need to revision up, revise our policies and procedures to match our charter. The controlling document is the charter.
Thank you, thank you, guys. I'm just going to end with some real quick closing remarks. I promise you, Roger, and I promise you the clerk and the mayor and Mr. Saab, if you bring this in front of the council, the council majority votes yes, we're not going to have this issue no more. We don't got to go back and forth. I've been receiving emails since January. You tell me we're in March. Let's just bring it in front of council and just end it. It's not, it's, it's, it's not rocket science. Let's, let's move our city forward. Let's not keep bickering on those small things. Thank you. Councilman Ahmad, I mean, yeah, now Councilman Saab, you made the motion. Would you like to amend your motion with removing twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty-three, twenty-nine, three?
No, uh, three and twenty-six, um, I'm not, I'm not, I just had questions on them.
Okay, so you, so you don't want to remove three?
Or twenty-six.
And you don't want to remove twenty-six or, it was another, twenty-nine?
Twenty-six.
I have twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
Twenty-six is the canine dog.
Okay, and the twenty-six.
Got clarification on that.
Okay, so you don't want to remove it?
No, no, I don't, I, um, no, no, it's staying on the agenda.
Okay.
Ali De, we got clarification that his contract has, starts the first, so.
So Mr. De, we're not going to be seeing those anymore. This is just because we need to catch up and get you on W two. Thank you.
All items twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and thirty-three.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and thirty-three, you would like them removed?
Yes.
Councilman, uh, Conston, would you like to second that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have consideration of bids. DPW Director Conrad, purchase and payment of replacement trees. Not all at once, please.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the purchase and payment of thirty-five trees to replace trees removed from right of way by the DPW from CQC Landscaping, who offered the lowest quote of twenty thousand eight hundred and twenty-five. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign the warrant up on receipt and authorize the treasurer to issue payment. Fund for this purchase will be from tree removal permit account one oh one dash zero 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 dash two eight three dash four four zero as outlined in seven dash eight.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Mr. Conrad, you didn't have to do anything. Congratulations. Next up, we have seven B Library Director McCaffrey, bid award JFK. What's that?
Bob has a question whether we voted on claims.
Yeah, we did. We voted on claims. Yep. You amended your, your, your motion. Next up, seven B Library Director McCaffrey, bid award JFK Library Roof Repair.
Council Chair.
Council, who, who asked?
Councilman Ahmad. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for the JFK Library Roof Repair to Newton Crane Roofing for the total of eight thousand and authorize the comptroller to return the bid bonds to unsuccessful bidders. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from the account seven three eight dash seven three eight dash nine three one zero zero zero. Further, approve a budget amendment increasing this account by eight thousand, which will be drawn from the library balance as outlined in seven dash B.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussions on that? I do have to say, Mr. McCaffrey, um, every meeting, since I've been here for the last two years, has attended a meeting either here or on Zoom. And when I read his proposal, very well put, pretty long images. You showed the roof, you showed the cracks, you showed, you showed the, the inside of the wall, the interior, exterior roof. I mean, um, really, that, that, you're, you're amazing. And I really enjoyed reading it. I saw that, I was able to visualize it. I was able to read it through the RFP. It was extremely long, but when I read it, I understood it. And I, you know, I, I kind of wish that we saw more things like that. And, and maybe, who knows? Maybe you'd one day teach a bunch of us on how to submit some of these things because it was really easy for us to read. It was. Lot, lot of transparency in there. And, and Mr. McCaffrey, honestly, you, you do a phenomenal job for our libraries. And again, you attend every single council meeting. And if it's, you can't be here, uh, you're on Zoom. And so I thank you for that.
Council Chair.
Yes, Councilman Saab.
Uh, Director never asks for much when he's here. So thank you for putting this through for our business.
And, and, you know, we've seen roof repairs in the past in the city, you know, north of a hundred thousand. We've seen one for eight thousand. We'll fix it six times if you want. No, we won't. I love it. Thank you, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have Board of Reviews appointment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Conston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with a mayoral appointment of Cassidy Townsend to the Board of Review with a term to expire January twenty twenty-six. This is to fill a vacancy left by Jennifer Gross. In addition, concur with a mayoral reappointment of Nicole Miller to the Board of Review, term to expire January twenty twenty-seven. Further, approve the addition of an alternate position to the Board of Review to cover unexpected absences and concur with a mayoral appointment of Khalil Ajami to the position, term to expire January twenty twenty-six, as outlined in eight A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Conston, seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I was discussing earlier with the core council. I don't know, I got an email saying that probably we're not following the state law about, um, with the Board of Review, like it has to probably expire in odd years versus even years. I can't, he told me he's going to check into it. So I don't know, to be on the safe side, maybe if we can amend the appointment to be of January twenty twenty-five. And, um, and also for Khalil Ajami, I did not receive any information. I'm not sure even if we can add a member to be as an alternate member. I guess we have just to follow the state law. And core council is going to go ahead and check on it. Can we go ahead and amend this for now, just to make the first appointment to expire January twenty twenty-five? And, uh, and I guess we're okay with, uh, with Nicole. But myself, I did not receive any information about Khalil Ajami. And plus, I don't know if we even can add an alternate member per state law. I did check with the assessor and she did also forward that to the core council to review.
Okay. I mean, I don't think, Mayor, I think it's fine if we just go to twenty twenty-five instead of twenty twenty-six.
For the first appointment, take off Khalil Ajami for now, and we're okay with Nicole Miller.
And when we hear back from Corporation Council, we'll just bring back Khalil Ajami. I like the idea of the alternative. I know that we're seeing a lot of people, the mayor's idea on that was, a lot of people are just kind of doing it for like a couple of months and then saying, hey, I don't want to do this. And then they just leave. And then, you know, you have to come and, you know, assess people's taxes and, or they're just not showing up to these meetings. The alternative could be, uh, the request. But I, I agree, Councilman, we obviously want to follow state laws. So if Councilman Conston is willing to amend that to say January of twenty twenty-five, and to removing.
Alternate member.
The alternate, the, yeah, the alternate member Khalil Ajami.
Council Chair, yeah, I mean, I, I think, and we have a problem filling a lot of the boards. So why would we not want to have, uh, there's a question of whether or not that's allowed under state law?
Correct.
Correct.
So we're just going to, we're going to hold off on that and the mayor can bring him back up.
Until the core council can review and, okay.
But that's fine.
Okay, and then, uh, will that be seconded by you, Councilwoman Brier?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next up on the agenda, I'm going to ask everybody here that we're going to speak very brief on this. We're not going to spend the next forty-five minutes on this one item. Either you support it or you don't. Thank you. Next up, we have proposal of salary increases.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad. I'm the Councilman Saab.
Second time you do that.
I, you know what? I missed the man so much that I.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the following proposed salary increases. Number one, adjustment to the salary ranges for the Pacific Director's position. Two, wage improvement for the Pacific non-union positions who have served for at least one year, as outlined in eight B.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Conston. Briefly, any discussions on this?
Yes.
Councilman Saab.
We have, uh, and I got an email from Roger regarding CDBG. I mean, this was approved almost, uh, almost a year ago. They have not got, um, their raises. Now, you emailed me saying they're part-time employees. They didn't send me, who was part-time employees?
I, I got the information.
Hang on one second, Roger.
I'm sorry.
In order, we're not going to do that.
And secondly, um, again, uh, I, I echo Mr. Bazey's comments. Why isn't the building department included on these raises? And my third question is, per the mayor's email, it says that, it said that the raises were held off until contract negotiations were complete. Our fire department has been without a contract for years. And so that's why I put that, that's it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I'd like also to echo Councilman Saab. I mean, uh, I mean, I wanted to give those raises like a year ago. But I do think we're a couple of months away. I know the meetings for the budget is already started. I would suggest just tabling this. Let's make it the right way. Let's be fair across the board, all city employees. And hopefully we can come up to an agreement in the next couple of months.
Thank you, Councilman Ahmad. I will say, um, you know, this is, I've had the same, uh, argument for many, many years. And I, I believe it or not, me and the mayor candidly had this conversation, including his wife. You want good employees, you pay good employees. You want bad employees, you, you know, you, you pay bad employees. You give somebody, you know, low-paying raise, they're going to sit around and they're not really going to do much work. You pay good employees, they're going to do the work. Uh, because you're able to hire, you know, you know, hire people that are, you're able to go out and get better talent. And not to say that we don't have good talent, we have amazing talent in the city. When you want to go out and find a, you know, fill a position, be able to get good talent, you got to say, hey, we got good money. We're going to pay you good money. We're going to pay you X amount of dollars. But I also have to agree to certain things that, you know, this has to kind of be a give and take. I know that our firefighters are currently, uh, I think they're the last union piece of the puzzle. And, uh, you know, and I also congratulate the administration on being able to reconcile those relationships with TPAM, uh, DPW. Well, they probably follow, but all the other union negotiations that we were able to reconcile and find a tentative agreement. Uh, but currently, I know that the men and women in the fire department are frustrated. But again, we can't get into negotiations. We're not going to discuss what's happening. But I kind of feel it's important that everybody deserves it, including our firefighters and our directors. So I think, you know, that's where kind of I stand there. I, I want to see the directors, I believe they all deserve a raise, including Mr. Watland. Going back to Mr. Watland, I actually gave him a call and said, hey, I noticed your name's not on there. I think there's been a little miss, mix up on, on what's happening with Mr. Watland's pay. And I, I don't know if Mr. Wenzel remembers this, but I can tell you, I went back and I watched it. I was in Mexico when we approved Mr. Watland. It was February of twenty twenty-one. It was February of twenty twenty-one. We were bringing Mr. Watland on as the director and the union electrician. And I said, hold on, I said, and I said that, I actually went back and watched it on YouTube. And I said, so you're telling me he's gonna do two jobs? And they said, yes. I said, at this amount? So here, you're not in here cuz you're on, you were on the council at the time. And he said, yes, I'm gonna do both jobs. I'm gonna be a union employee and I'm also gonna be the director. And I said, that is absolutely amazing. I said, at the price of eighty thousand? And Tom was talking about what, you know, Councilman Wensel was talking about what a good man he is and he's great for the city and blah, 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 blah. Um, so I want you to know, I want you to keep in mind, when we say we're giving these raises or, or Mr. Watland makes eighty thousand dollars a year, he's doing two jobs. He's your union electrician and he's your director. And so if there's, uh, anybody that should be on here today, it should definitely be Mr. Watland. Uh, Roger, you seem like you have other comments, so I'm gonna let you go ahead and speak.
Thank you, sir. Um, I, I'm not HR, but I, I, I did, as you sent me the email, I followed up with HR. And I-
What are you discussing regarding?
I'm sorry?
I didn't send you an email on Eric Watland?
No, you sent me an email on the, um-
CBGG.
CBGG and then-
Correct.
So I looked into the other stuff as well, that's why I sent the email that, uh, Councilman Saab was referencing. Um, I believe Mr. Watland, and I'm not HR, had gotten a raise in July of last year, twenty twenty-two, tw- twenty twenty-three. But in any case, um, HR has broken down, there's a reason why, uh, he's not on this list. And I, I thought it was a plausible reason and HR would speak more to that. Um, I think everyone on this list has been vetted. I think with the CBGG, the part-time, that's what information I got from HR. And I think there was a question of Mr. Jamal, but I think his money's, he's paid from by grants, federal grants. Um, HR broke that down and they could speak more to the issue. Nobody was overlooked. I, I took the time to look at what information was presented. And this was carefully pre- uh, prepared. Um, so that's, if that answers the question. And I think that's why, it was not overlooked. So it was a raise that was given to him, I think, last, I wanna say last July twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
Well, hang on, go ahead.
Thank you, Council Chair. Um, yeah, I, uh, I've been amiss not to contact HR directly myself cuz I have some questions. But I think some of the salaries, the, the increases have already gone through for some of these directors. Um, and I would like to see the, uh, if we can get the CWW, uh, salary report for the current one. The, the, the last one I have is from like twenty twenty-one. But, uh, having said that, um, this issue may need a little more study.
Council Chair.
I just have one question for you.
I'll answer his question later.
Okay, but my question is gonna be to you, then you can, uh, respectfully interrupt me. Uh, my question is, I see these are the salaries, okay? Are there, these are the salaries, but did any of these directors or employees receive bonuses, uh, in twenty twenty-three? So all these right here will match everybody's W twos?
Yeah, and somewhere zero percent increases for the last two years. I didn't want them to be, uh, I think that HR didn't want them to be held hostage by one contract that's negotiating with firefighters. I don't wanna get into per se. Um, I know that, I, I, I've checked with the clerk's office, I'm switching gears to CBGG. The motion that you did, you said it was a year ago. We're trying to find it and I don't know if you guys-
CBGG, I'll tell you when it was, you ready? Cuz I don't forget.
George is gonna write it down because we, we spent a significant time looking for it.
We did it in the middle of budget hearing. So you're gonna have to go through the budget hearing when we did CBGG, they showed up. Councilman Wensel requested it, uh, and if I'm mistaken, it was, uh, it, well, we went through, yes. And then when we did the final motion, when we, when we approved the budget, we, we ensured that we were gonna have a full-time, uh, director at the Ian Center and at the Burwin Center. And we agreed that the CBGG directors or employees were gonna be at forty dollars an hour. Mind you, that money is not from our budget. That money is coming through-
Grants.
Coming through grants, that's not coming out of the, the general ledger.
Through HUD.
We would, we would try to-
Correct.
We just wanted to figure out, make sure it followed, but we couldn't find it, that's why we were all looking for it.
Okay, so, uh, Mayor, you can go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Council Chair.
You're welcome, Mayor.
I guess a few things, uh, the first one is, uh, so you guys actually asked for a pay increase for a deputy, uh, a couple of meetings ago. And, you know, none, none of the stuff was discussed. So you guys unanimously approved, you know, one person to, to get that raise, you know, without, you know, saying anything. So the other thing is, uh, we have to put, you know, like all these positions, uh, because again, we're trying to, uh, to show like positive some, you know, something to the, uh, to the directors and some of the positions that we have requested on the list. And if you guys remember, I know Council Chair, you were on the, uh, the meeting at the time, um, as a, um, discussion, when, when you guys discussed this at the last budget meeting, you guys wanted to table the pay increases because we had few contracts were still, uh, being worked on. So since, since that last increase, we have six contracts that we, that we actually, um, resolved and you guys also approved, six of them. And with that, you know, eve- even after the firefighters, we're still negotiating right now. We're in the middle of negotiating, negotiating with the firefighters' union. We'll still get at, at least two more contracts coming up. So what are we gonna do, we gotta wait for another two?
No, don't.
So that's the thing.
That one will be done.
But at the same time, Council Chair, out of respect, you know, again, you know, we wanna make sure that we, you know, out of respect for these directors, you know, we're, the city is short-staffed, you know, right now. We don't have enough people to do what we need to do. Everybody's been overworked, the directors and, you know, like for example, the Deputy Treasurer, Deputy Treasurer is working a lot of hours, you know, since, you know, the absence of the Treasurer. So, uh, she's, she, you know, again, we're holding that one hostage, you know, just, you know, at the next budget. And we don't even know if it's gonna get approved. And Councilman Coniston, you mentioned, you know, CWW, that, that, that list is already in your packet. If you look, it's actually right here.
Yes, yes.
So I, I, I go to the meetings for the CWW and the DCC meetings. So we're part of both, we're part of the DCC, I'm sure you know, and also part of the CWW. So that's all the mayors and Conference of Western Wayne and also the DCC, the Downriver Community mayors. And we all talk about, you know, some of the issues we're having, trying to fill people. And we kind of plead with each other, like, hey, you know, don't come near my city, don't try to recruit anybody from my city. Because it's very competitive right now, with, you know, any of these people, they can go to another city and do, they could get more, more money than what we're offering. So just to be fair, you know, we've been asking these folks to wait and wait and wait. And, you know, we still haven't provided pay raises for the last two years. And somebody mentioned, you know, I, I was here in twenty eighteen, Councilman Coniston was here in twenty eighteen. Um, also, um, Councilman Ahmed, I think you were there, and Councilman Wensel, you know, the-
Councilman Ahmad wasn't here, it was Councilman, former Councilman David Dalla.
So, no, I mean, Councilman Ahmed was at the time, you, you were, I don't know if you guys remember, the pays at that time for the directors, these guys were double-dipping. You know, so they, they had a, an agreement with the previous administration that they can actually, uh, they can collect their, uh, retirement, as you can remember. And so part of that agreement, so there was something, uh, agreed of, um, at that time with, uh, administration and also that, well, the directors, that they can take that whatever the fifty-five, sixty thousand dollar pay rate or, uh, salary. But at the same time, they were still collecting their retirement, their pension. So when we increased the pay at the time, we didn't give pay raises, we just did an adjustment. It was a market adjustment for salaries, that's all it was, it wasn't pay increases. So again, you know, there hasn't been increases for the last two years. And, you know, I was, I was looking at all the contracts we, uh, that you guys approved, you know, TPOM, the dispatchers, DPW supervisors, patrol supervisors, police supervisors, the carpenters' union, okay, so the minimum, minimum increase that you guys approved, minimum was seven percent, uh, for, you know, some of the, some of them. And as high as, as twenty-eight percent on some contract, oh, I'm sorry, thirty percent. So I have a list here of, um, of a breakdown from twenty, uh, since, from twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four pay increase. And here's the amount, you know, like twelve, twelve, twelve thirty-nine, thirteen percent, fourteen percent, ten percent, twenty-eight percent for the dispatchers. You got six point five two percent, fourteen percent, a- again, it goes on, twenty-one percent for patrol officers, thirty percent, police supervisors, twenty-two point three five percent. The carpenters' union, nine point eight and eighteen percent for some. And, uh, again, you know, the list goes on, and you guys approved that. So we're, we're asking for five percent.
You know, we approved that and your guys respectfully, as what the HR had told us, so like, we did it in relationship with you, we worked hand-in-hand with the administration. So we collaboratively did it together. But I want you to know, I just have a few things to say, as far as, uh, I wrote it down here. You talk about the deputy comptroller that we gave a raise to, if you recall that conversation, you said that nobody wants to come work here because the pay is so underlow. The Councilman Ahmad said, bring it and we'll, we'll approve it. And we brought it and we approved it, we're all for giving good pay. I think, and this isn't like a, you guys did this, so here, give, it's not us versus you or you versus us. This, this, this meeting started by saying, we're all gonna work together, we're gonna bridge those, and water's beneath us. Um, but I think ultimately here, the conversation is saying, great, we got twenty-two percent and five percent, and the lowest was seven point five percent. And they're only asking for a five percent increase. I, I agree with you, I wanna give them a twenty percent increase. What we're also saying is, it's been two years since they've gotten raises, it's been three years since the firefighters gotten raises. Um, so, so it's, so it's technically, it, it, we look, how do we look like? Cuz this happened in the past, Mayor. If you recall, we said we're gonna give everybody raises and we're gonna work with all the union employees. So we've given the directors raises two years ago. We worked our way through to fix everything for the directors, I mean, for the, uh, 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 union employees. We now get to the end, we're at the last piece, the firefighters. And whatever is happening in negotiation, Roger, I know you're not in your head, but this is reality, I was here two years ago. So I, I know these conversations and I remember what happened.
What I was saying.
Hang on, Roger, please. And so all I'm saying is, we wanna give these individuals raises, we have great directors. We wanna see, uh, uh, more, more, uh, you know, more enforcement done by our ordinance. We wanna see, uh, more things being done with, uh, you know, most of these positions to make things easier on them. And we also wanna make sure that we're not losing good talent to other municipalities. Um, but I want you to keep in mind, I'm not, I don't feel comfortable saying to the directors, which we've asked for raises back year to year because last year they didn't get a raise because we said, hold off. Uh, but the request of a raise was asked twice. We gave it to you, we honored it the first time. The second time, we said, hold off until we fix the issue with, with what's happening with our union employees. Uh, we were able to work things out with the police, our carpenter union, and, and many of the other unions in the, in our city. There's still the firefighters. And these firefighters risk their lives every single day for our city, as just like our directors do. Um, and so I personally, this, I'm speaking for myself, I can't speak for the rest of the council. I know that our firefighters are eager to finding a tentative agreement and working with this administration. And in order to do so, and for us to approve them, and these raises for, uh, our directors, we have to see a working, uh, working relationship with our fire department as well.
Council, uh, Council Chair, I apologize, but I, I don't think we should hold and say things when we're in collective bargaining that, no, we're not gonna pay you guys till you settle this contract. That's what, that becomes, you, you're helping the firefighters against the city or us against the firefighters. You're in, I, I'm, please, Council Chair.
Okay.
We are, we are interfering with, you are interfering with a collective bargaining agreement. You're putting undue pressure on one side and you're holding hostage, um, other parts of the city to, to settle one, one, uh, one contract. And that's not fair, it's unfair. And it's interfering with the collective bargaining procedures and our lawyers as we go into negotiations. So I would advise again, with all due respect, not to do that, not to hold one, one group hostage because there's one contract, that's what the mayor just said. We settled seven, but we can't hold other people hostage's salaries.
Roger, that's not what's happening here.
Because you're talking about undue pressure and it's unfair. Not that we don't hundred percent support those firefighters, I love those fire, I've had sit-down meetings with the board, I'm privileged to work with those guys. So I, I think, I, I think that we have to control ourselves.
Thank you, Roger. I'm gonna, I, hang on, guys, nothing from the audience, I wanna make it very clear, no way, in, no way, that I insinuate that I'm holding the directors accountable based on what you do with the firefighters. So please don't insinuate that, uh, that's the last time I'm gonna ask you to insinuate anything like that. Again, that is not what I'm doing here. What I've done here was I said what we've said for over two years. Guys, let's make sure that we can take care of our union employees and we def- I've said here ten times, which you've not once illustrated. Hang on, Roger, you're not once illustrated that I've said ten different times, I want to give them raises. So don't insinuate that that's, that my attempt here was to hijack what you guys are doing and saying, we're not gonna pay you guys and I'm, I'm using in my right hand to make sure that, that, that the firefighters are gonna be paid. That's not once what I was doing. So please, I'm gonna respectfully ask you to never insinuate that that's what I was doing, because that's not my intention. That's not who I am as a person, that's not what's inside of me.
Council Chair, let me be clear to you, I do not insinuate. I tell you what you do or what you don't.
No, Roger, what you do is, you work against this council constantly.
Council Chair, I, you asked, I gave you respect, I didn't interrupt you.
You did.
Don't interrupt me.
You just interrupted me.
I do not ins-
You just interrupted me. But you can go ahead.
Thank you, Council Chair, with all due respect. I don't insinuate, I'm telling you that you are interfering and it's turning out-
Well, I'm telling you wrong.
Your intentions are good, I'm not saying that, it's bad intentions. I think what you're trying to do is admirable. I'm just asking you to listen to what I'm saying to you, advising you, you don't have to follow it, it's just a suggestion.
Thank you.
So, please, that you're ending up putting-
Council Chair.
Negotiations, the collective bargaining in a bad position.
That is not happening.
And I'm not insinuating, I'm telling you.
I know.
Although your intentions are good, this is the result, that's what I-
Thank you. Roger, I'm gonna end it by this, with mine and your discussion, that you're one hundred percent wrong on that.
Okay.
Go ahead, Councilman Wensel.
Thank you. Um, I wanna elaborate on something. When that happens, it happened when I was talking about the, uh, PTOM contracts. And, and it was said before when the mayor was on city council that at one point, we weren't gonna give raises out until a contract was settled. It's not negotiating, it's being fair. You know, we're, we're leaving these guys behind while we're going ahead with this, we're just trying to be fair, that's, that's what we're doing.
Called an organic approach.
And, um, as far as these raises go, I mean, I'm all for giving raises, obviously. But you know, we have, our Deputy Treasurer, uh, the, the woman, the girl's been here for thirty-four years, probably longest employee, oldest employee, not oldest by age, but oldest as time served in the city, thirty-four years of service. And we always say we can't give raises by the person, but by the position. In this case, I think it, it make an exception, I mean, this, this, this Deputy Director has gone above and beyond. And, um, so we, we need to go over each one of these one by one, which we do it during the budget. And as far as Rick Watland goes, he's a, he's our, uh, our, our engine, he's not our, our city electrician, he's our electrical inspector. And, uh, which is a union job and he's the director. And he's a, he's still a union member, he still pays union dues, but he has not given, got, gotten any of the bonuses or signing bonus or anything that the union members have been getting since he's got his contract. So he's, he's missed out on a lot, he's sacrificing a lot and he's getting, getting shafted on a lot of things.
Correct. Guys, I just wanna move this over to a vote. Councilman-
Yeah, quickly, the, uh, I stand corrected, the, uh, salary ranges from the Conference of Western Wayne are here. And I just, uh, remember our former Council Chair, David Abdullah, saying, you know, we've gotta pay our members what, um, uh, they're worth. And it is a point well taken that we have settled many contracts, the police contracts in particular, and, and, uh, the, the union employees have, uh, gotten, uh, raises. That's all I'll say.
Thank you, Councilman. A motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Coniston, uh, hearing none, all in favor, please state aye. Those oppose, nay.
Nay.
Madam Clerk, will you please take real call?
Tom Wensel?
No.
Nancy Breyer?
No.
Hassan Saab?
No.
Hassan Ahmad?
No.
Robert Coniston?
No.
Ian Mobeydo?
No.
Motion defeated.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up, we have reports from city officials, Building and Engineering Director Watland, food truck park proposal.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I moved that the Dear, I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the food truck park as requested, uh, by the Building Department to comply with, uh, city ordinances for permitting and licenses as outlined in nine A.
Second. Motion made by, uh, Councilman Saab, seconded by, is that Councilwoman Breyer?
No, Robert Coniston.
Coniston.
Okay, Councilman Coniston, uh, any discussion on this?
Council Chair is, is the director on, on Zoom?
Director of Building and Engineering, Watland? I don't, I don't think I seen him earlier.
Is there someone that can explain to residents what this food truck park is?
So I can, I can talk a little bit about it because I know the city of Dearborn is doing it. Um, if you want me to, Councilman.
Sure, please.
Um, this is going to be, uh, surprisingly, uh, that they're, it's coming to Dearborn Heights. So the city of, uh, Dearborn, I don't know if you saw, they had this rendering where they were gonna show like, um, painted grounds, a lot of greenery trees. You're gonna see, instead of having food trucks all around the city, you're gonna have one central location. And there, they'll have a building that will allow like TVs, uh, seating areas, places to eat, places to sit down. And so when you would get your food, you take it to like a cafeteria type, or it'd be like a sports, uh, maybe a bunch of TVs or whatnot. I mean, just based on what the renderings that I saw. Uh, and so this is coming to Dearborn Heights. I didn't really think Dearborn Heights was gonna, you know, really come to this. And so I think the mayor and, and the building and engineering, and, and really what this does is it gives the families, cuz we've always preached families, right? Now your families can go somewhere, kinda have like that New York-style feel, um, and then you don't have trash and things all around the streets. You're still gonna have your food trucks in, in different spots, but now you can go to one spot and get seven or eight different food trucks.
Is there a proposed location?
Uh, yeah, it's on Warren, and that's-
No, Waverly.
It's on Waverly.
Council Chair.
Uh, hold on, anything else, Ken?
Yeah, that's good, yeah, thank you.
Councilman Saab.
So most important thing about this is trash and sanitation. There's actual bathrooms, sinks and all that, cuz current food trucks don't have bathrooms, trash is all over the place, this is confined.
I wanna say there's trash all over the place.
There is.
I'm gonna disagree with you on that one.
There is.
But-
At least on, on a few of them, there is.
Uh, any other discussion on this?
One quick question. Um, are we still gonna permit off-park food truck? Will that, that'll still be permitted?
Yeah, yeah, you'll still be, you'll still be able to do that.
Okay, well, you said instead of seeing trucks all over the city-
Well, I mean, what's gonna happen is, you know, a lot of the popular trucks are gonna be like, are gonna be at the spot, so other of these, these new trucks are gonna be like, how do I get in there? Uh, and then from what I also heard, is that they might even start swapping between Dearborn and Dearborn Heights cuz, you know, Dearborn has, is building one as well at Fairlane. And so if you can, you see one in Dearborn, two weeks later, they might end up in Dearborn Heights and the one in Dearborn Heights might end up in Dearborn. Um, which I think ultimately will, uh-
Is this privately owned, uh, business?
Yes. Yes. Any other question? Myself, I personally think this is a great idea. Um, uh, I think this is, you know, really, it, it, it brings a new perspective to the community. I think this is something that our city hasn't seen. I think you're seeing this in different cities, I know we're a very small bedroom community, I'm not saying this is gonna be some extravagant, uh, unbelievable place with loud music. This is gonna be a place where you should be able to sit down at a park, eat, eat at a food truck. Food trucks are the new things in twenty twenty-four, um, whether you like it or not. I know I support Brick and Motors, I eat at a Brick and Motor almost every day, my wife gets mad at me when she sees our bank statement, but, um, I, you know, I eat out almost two, three, four times, you know, here in the city of Dearborn Heights. I, I enjoy it, I love the restaurants that we have in our city. Uh, but sometimes I'd like to grab a hot dog from, you know, the Hot Dog on Telegraph in Warren, I, I think they make great hot dogs. Um, sometimes I wanna go to the place on Hassan, uh, and Warren. By the way, if you guys haven't had it, it's one of the most authentic Mexican food I've ever eaten in my life. Taco Bell's got nothing on it. Um-
Hassan Telegraph.
Hassan, Hassan Telegraph, I'm sorry.
Council Chair, you, you brought up a good point about loud music. Have the residents of this area been, been, uh, asked what their feelings are and, you know? I mean, this, this is something, it's gonna be traffic for sure. Lot, lot of traffic.
Yeah.
And have the residents been consulted or asked for their opinions on this, was it a planning session or anything?
I, I, hang on.
There is no neighbors.
Yeah, well, hang on.
Oh, no, there's homes in there.
Well, I want, I want you guys to know, I, I just wanna go back. Guys, this is a business perspective. And you know, when you, when I, when I opened up a business in the city of Dearborn Heights and I had speakers outside, I never had to pick up the phone and, and ask to the city, do I gotta call the residents and ask them if I could do one, two, three? I'm just, what I'm trying to say is, this is no different than a regular business. It's actually becoming a brick and motor without not being a brick and motor. It's a brick and motor at a place that's being shut down, we're not collecting any taxes, we're not revenueing any money to the city. We're saying it is a brick and motor. And the difference is, you go outside, grab your food and you sit inside. You're gonna pay the taxes, uh, the business, these, these other business owners that own these food trucks are now having a central location to be able to go. I wish I can find one bad idea about this thing. Um, hang on, Roger. I, honestly, if you can give me one bad, bad excuse on this, I would say, let's, let's destroy it. But this is a good idea for the city, guys. This is really, time you're gonna be able to take your family, they might play hopscotch in the street, I don't know. But it's, I'm hoping, you know, it's closed down, but it's gonna be available. You're not gonna see basketball rooms and playing dodgeball, you're not gonna be able to see things like that. But you're gonna be able to see people waiting in line, grab their food, walk inside, have AC, have it heated, uh, and be able to watch a sports game. Who knows, David Abdullah might watch the Lions out of there. He'll be at the games, you know, or he'll be at the game, one of the away games.
Council Chair.
That's true.
You know, I did have the same concern as Councilman Wensel, but I think after I looked at the map, it's basically in the business district, there's no residents. There's no residents. And yeah, there's the cemetery, basically all businesses. So I think this is a great location, and it's an amazing property.
You want my honest opinion? I think there's one bad thing about this, truly. The one bad thing that I think that this has, it's not in a good location. I don't think you're gonna see a lot of traffic out there. I hope that the business owners are successful. I truly don't see that you're gonna see a lot of foot traffic coming out of there. I mean, they better have a great PR company. You know?
Council chair.
We have drafted an ordinance that would address the issues, Mr. Wenzel. I've sent it, Carrie and I were talking to bring it back to the planning commission. But yes, when you have the noise issues, the traffic, businesses would typically would have to approve it before it's, because it may affect their business. But if you're setting it separately, we have provisions for safety, for the quality of food, and that how they won't interfere with existing businesses. I can send you a copy of the ordinance that we had proposed, and it addresses a lot of concerns. And if you swap, you wanna make sure you're not swapping licenses, because they have to get background checks for anyone coming in, that there's no child molesters or anything are on the list. So everything is protected and looked at. I think it's a great idea. But we have put provisions to address the concerns, that relevant concerns are to be raised.
Council chair, do you have an exact address on Waverly?
It's the old bingo thing. It says big bingo on the wall. VFW. There you go. I knew Vince would know it. No, no.
Council chair.
So it's just north of Richardson, correct?
All right, any other discussion here, guys, before we take this to a vote? Great. Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have IT Director Cooper, WDHT camera purchase.
Council chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the purchase and payment of a one Canon XF605 4K UHD Pro camcorder for WDHT as a replacement for aging equipment at a price not to exceed $42.99 based on the lowest call. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and treasure to issue payment from the PEC funds account 101-809-981-001 as outlined in 9-P.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on this? I have a quick question. Mr. Cooper, really simple, quick and easy. Just give us a quick breakdown. I mean, it's a, you know, it's a great purchase, $4,200. I got a lot of friends that are in IT or do videography. Anytime I had to run a campaign, there was one guy that's like, my camera costs $12,000. I see this one's only $4,000. So is this what you say is not the best?
This is actually, say, if you remember, a few months ago, you approved one of the cameras. This is the exact same camera that was already approved. Angela's requesting this, so that when she does remember her interview style, she wants the two cameras. She has said that the quality of the video of the original camera was night and day difference.
Okay, great. Angela knows best.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also wanted, just before going on to the next, I see we have two of our fine officers in the city of Dearborn Heights. I'd like to recognize that, maybe give them a quick round of applause. Thank you, guys, for what we do. Next up, we have Parks and Recreation Director Swor.
Sour.
Sour? Sour. Approval of grant, did we get a new director?
No, Kim.
That's Kim's last name. Okay, I didn't know. Sorry, Parks and Recreation Director Sour, approval of grant scout services.
Council chair.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the retention of services from the grant scout to develop a grant application for a MDNR trust fund grant in the amount of $5,000. This grant is for additional funding to complete the Van Houten Park project, Heather Lane Park project. Funds for this will be taken from the Parks and Recreation Budget, account number 101-691-981.000 as outlined in 9C.
Support. Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up here, we have Corporation Council for Renna memorandum of understanding between MKR Investment and the city of Dearborn Heights.
Council chair.
Councilwoman Breyer.
I will make the motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the memorandum of understanding, the MOU, between the city of Dearborn Heights and MKR Investment, owners of the property located at 26615 Ford Road. This MOU governs the proposed use of the adjacent store that is part of the commercial parcel as outlined in 9D.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? I actually have something here for Roger. Roger, so this is basically stating that the adjacent of the building to Starbucks on Ford Road on the corner of Ford Road and Gully cannot be rented out without the approval of the administration? Or it can't be approved anything inside that building until, from what I read on there, certain stipulations are done. Is that correct?
Yeah, they went through the, they already got the planning approval, but...
Has to be a very low...
That's what we're asking for, low. Because there was another place that was gonna go in there that was high volume, but they moved across the street. What they're looking at is a clothing store. The hours would be from 10 to 5 or 4, actually, so it wouldn't interfere with traffic.
Can we adjust this, Madam Clerk? So that, because look, that's, it's no secret that that corner there is extremely, extremely dangerous during hours from 2 o'clock to 5 o'clock, to 7 o'clock. And when you're seeing the families leaving from Kenlock Elementary School, coming in onto John Daly, and leaving off of John Daly, and turning left onto John, everybody's stuck. Somebody's pulling out of the Starbucks. And I know, this is gonna force cars to go right. What I'd like this to state here basically is that whomever is approved has to come back in front of council to ensure that, you know, we're looking up for the best interest of the city. You know, I know we're not the experts, but if you are to allow a company like a dress shop or a clothing store, it's still likely to come before council before they, you know, we allow them to open a business there. Because at the end of the day, it's affecting our families. I can tell you, I get a phone call about this. Granted, now that, you know, the boycott is happening on Starbucks, it hasn't been as busy. But I can tell you that a constant phone call on that corner, every day.
Council chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
It does say here, any project needs city council and mayor approval. But my question is, how does it work if the mayor approved, the city council does not approve, or vice versa? How does that work? We need both approval?
We brought it for you. We're bringing it to you for your approval. And they needed a memo of understanding to do the survey and plan. And what they're gonna do is put in a cut, so the cars cannot go left, they have to go right. And they're gonna raise it up so they can guarantee that. But we want, we brought it to you because instead of just doing a contract to go forward, to make sure you're involved from the beginning.
Honestly, but you know what this is like? To me, it's like, I hate to go here with this, but this is gonna be like, if it fails, they're gonna say, council, you guys approved it. Council, you guys, you guys said yes. And so like, at the end of the day, I'm not the expert in telling you what shit can and can't be here, right? I'm not the expert to tell you that even though you're forcing them to turn right, what tells you that they're not gonna turn right on Doc Theater and go through these million dollar holes and turn right onto Amboy to make a right off of Ford Road? And so really, it's just sending more traffic back into our residential area.
Both the city council and administration are working together.
Yes, I agree. I'm not disagreeing.
And with engineer Dev, who's, this is a step to go forward. Everyone, we've had the traffic studies done on that location. It's approved by the planning commission. That store is empty right now, and so, but we are working together.
I wanna see that the store work on something. You know, I had a friend reach out to me, and he said to me, you know, I'm hearing that there's this thing coming up and that the council's about to make an approval on it. And, you know, believe it or not, the friend that she said he had a conversation with me and the mayor. And, you know, this was a concerned resident. Mayor, I believe he spoke with you, and he spoke with me. So like, now I'm a little like alarmed, you know?
Well, if we look at the terms in the plan, it says it's contingent upon a site plan to allow. But that's the guarantees there built in, that we check it out. We're not saying you automatically have it. We're saying, we're giving you, okay, we're giving you direction and instructions, and you've gotta meet these criteria, which addresses your concern.
I got a quick question. Mayor, what do you think about this? Do you think that we should have another business in there?
Council chair.
Yeah.
I know since I've been in this position, we rejected, I think, three restaurants. And one of the restaurants actually went across the street because of the traffic. And we've been going back and forth, and their attorneys, they had a couple attorneys that actually came and had a discussion with us. For me, I was not in favor of that location to be more busy than what it is. Because, I mean, I've had issues turning on John Daly, you know, and, you know, somebody's waiting in line to get into the first driveway. And I remember being on council at the time, when it did come forward to us to approve for the drive-in. And we were under the impression it was only one business, not two. I think Councilman Wenzel and Councilman Constant remember that. And so then they came back, when I was in this office, obviously, that they came back and they said, no, we wanna open another location. And I know we've talked to a lot of residents. They were not in favor of having anything over there. And I've had, actually, two people came to my office. One, he had at least, I think, one or two daughters that he had, they got T-boned. And they were teenagers. And there was one resident that came in. Also, he had, I think, an eight or nine-year-old girl that also, they got hit over there. And she was, you know, she was hurt pretty bad.
Are you not in favor of this?
No, I'm just saying, if they meet, you know, it's up to you. That's why we put it in front of council.
I don't want you to put it on the council. I wanna know, I wanna, whatever you think mayor is right, I'm gonna support. And it seems like right now, you don't like it, so I'm not gonna support this then.
Council chair.
Guys, nothing from the audience.
The planning commission has approved it already. That's the problem.
Guys.
Council chair.
Hang on, one second, please. I just want you to know, if the mayor says it's not a good idea, I don't see why we should say it's a good idea, Roger.
I represent the city. I'm just trying to go, and we've been threatened with lawsuits because we approved them to have a second business there. And Mr. Dev will talk a little bit more about it, so I just have to do our due diligence, that we brought it up, we tried to resolve it.
I'm gonna go use the restroom, so Councilman Ahmad's gonna take over for a second.
Council, vote down.
If I have to make a vote, my vote...
Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Council.
Was it me?
Mr. Dev?
Oh, okay.
Mr. Dev?
Council.
Mr. Dev?
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question about the parking. Is there sufficient parking for two businesses?
So, depending on the business. So depending on the business count. So this, as Corp Counsel had said, since I joined the city, this issue has been going back and forth at least four times that I was involved in. And prior to my time with the city, I dug up the records. This has been through planning twice. And what I was able to find out, and I verified that with building and engineering and the people that were involved with this project, from the start, yes, the city approved two businesses. Yes, the city approved the two driveways, especially the one closer to Ford Road on John Daly. So I was hoping that that wasn't the case, but the site plan that was approved by the city is what's out there. And it was built for two businesses. Now, why it was done that way, so we were threatened, as the council indicated. Look, we didn't do anything that you guys did not approve. So we did it by, according to our approved plan. Now, the only thing that wasn't done, and I had to review the ordinance like 10 times to find something that will not allow the chicken restaurant in that place. And the only thing I was able to find is that they did not obtain CFO for the second place within 12 months of opening the Starbucks. So I told them that. I says, you know, you need to go back to the planning commission because you didn't get the CFO within 12 months. So they went back to the planning commission, and that business was denied because of the count, the parking spaces, and the circulation, and all that good stuff. We also made them do a traffic study in addition to the one we did, looking at pressures and potential conflict with the left turn, both left turn out to Ford Road and left turn coming out from the first driveway on John Daly, south of Ford. So it was an issue. We've been going back and forth at least, what, two, three years that I know of, and before my time. The final discussion was, look, we have an approval for the two stores, and we built them, and we received a CFO for the first operation. The driveways were not changed. They were exactly what we submitted five years ago or whatever, when we developed it. So we have, we built according to the city approval. Now we need to operate. So we went back to type of businesses. No, you can't have a second drive-through. You can't have an exit. We need to enforce the no-left turn. And this is when Roger, so they brought the engineers back and said, okay, what can we do to make the driveways less prone to people making the left? And this is what they said, you know, we will do the engineering. So we gave them, you know, suggestions. Make the driveway turn, an island in the driveway on Ford Road, you know, all that stuff. But, so their attorney told our attorney that we will agree to do these things, which is what the condition here, you know, based on you guys approving, you know, the operation. So they didn't wanna spend the money on the site until we approve the idea of going back in. I don't know, I'm not an attorney. It's not a best situation, obviously. It should have never been approved. But we did give them, the city gave them approval. They built it per that approval years ago, and we have that vacant store as a result.
I have just one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Why is it coming to city council, though? We've never had to bring this stuff in front of us.
I think the memo of understanding, it's a legal agreement. So the city's agreeing to MOU, and, you know, we need you to say yes or no. It's an MOU, it's an agreement.
If you, I have to make sure, because they're, obviously, they're threatening to sue us because we approved it. And I'm doing my due diligence, bringing it to your attention and to the administration's attention. Both have to sign it, because the mayor has to sign this, too.
Okay. Well, Roger, this is what I'll tell you. This is for me at least, and I can't speak for the rest of the council. Whomever the judges and whoever the attorneys are, tell them to let their families live on John Daly and live on Doc Theater and Cecile, and let them watch the traffic flow that's gonna come through there and jeopardize all the people's families, and tell me then then to make a decision. But I can tell you for myself, this is, and like the mayor just said, this is one of the most dangerous corners. He's got friends where two of their daughters were T-boned on the corner there. For me, I don't know why it's coming in front of city council. And two, if it does come in front of city council, I know my stance on this, and I'm definitely not in support of having, defined in type of grounds on this. Nobody's life is worth me negotiating with. And that's a very dangerous corner.
I agree with that. I'm just thinking, we approved, the planning commission approved it.
I'm not the planning...
No, 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 I haven't finished, Council chair. No disrespect. So the council, the planning commission approved it, I guess, a couple of times. So here you say, why is it coming before you? So if we go ahead and sign it, and say then something happens, it's the city. We're all the city. So we're giving you input into it. If you deny it, you deny it. But it's coming before you because we're all, you asked to be included. So we're trying to include, because all of us. And you could say no. I mean, all I can do is bring what they're suggesting, what our planning commission approved, and I'm bringing it to you and to the mayor. I don't, I'm not telling the mayor to do it. You know, if he doesn't like it, I'm just telling you that this is passed by the planning commission, approved by the planning commission. You have people invested in that property and its site, and we have to do our due diligence, which is to bring it to you. That's all we can do.
Thank you. One second. Were you on the planning commission while this was approved? Were you on the planning commission when this was approved?
No.
What planning commission approved this?
I wasn't with the city.
I wasn't with the city.
Council chair.
I don't know.
Councilman Sobbs.
What year was it?
So just to echo Mr. Dev, I live on John Daly.
Yes, sir.
And the traffic in the morning.
I agree.
You cannot, you gotta turn on Kenlock and go down somewhere else to...
Councilman, I fully agree with you. I'm just telling you.
So my thing is, in my profession, your profession, where the traffic device is, how many feet does a curb car have to be away from that?
Where the traffic device, oh, the first driveway is banned, absolutely.
So I'm for another business coming, but with the condition that we report is that first curb car has to be closed off. One way in, one way out.
So, okay, so we have the same scenario coming up, at least this time I'm involved, on Amboy. Exact same scenario with Lee Chicken now, apparently just got bought by a different chicken. Exact same scenario.
Timeout. Lee Chickens, I was on the planning commission. We never approved a driveway on a residential street.
I agree, I agree. So, yeah, so we told the applicant, but that didn't take, that didn't take place when, you know, when the planning commission approved the, you know, the Starbucks. I looked at those, that was exactly what they submitted, and they built it. So it was approved. The point is, you don't have to approve it. I'm just saying that we are in this position because the city had accepted two stores on that site with those two driveways.
My thing is, I support businesses coming, but these officers will tell you how many accidents... many accidents happened there.
Oh, I have.
When you want to turn left, people are blocking you going into the drive-through.
I have the crash numbers.
Well, why can't we work outside with owner? If that first curb car is closed, you got the, for the one in the far back, which won't hold traffic, and the one in the front and off of Ford Road, one way out, one way in. We don't need the, because the, the way you're looking at it, you guys said you did a traffic study.
Yeah, I did.
When the traffic comes in off of John Daly and they turn right into the building, you're blocking all of the drive-through traffic trying to get out.
And even worse, if they're coming out of the first driveway making the left, and I watched them do it.
I, I see every, I live on John Daly.
I know, I see.
And, and.
I did it, I'm not going to lie, I turned left.
And, and, and my, my biggest thing is, is that I hate to see vacant buildings in our city. I promote businesses. But until that curb car, that first curb car is closed off, I don't see really solving a solution. No matter if it tells you to turn left, they're going to swing back around.
If you force it right, exactly.
There was an officer there about a month ago. Honestly, I think within an hour, he wrote 30 tickets.
I, I, I agree with you, 100%. My first choice was to see if the city can condemn the driveway and actually take a concrete truck and dump it. That's, that was my first choice.
Put a water main break there. Solves the problem.
He thinks like.
It could happen.
Well, we could, we could, with council chair's permission, I would say, if we add what you're saying to, as a condition in here, we could, we could do that. And put that in as one of the terms.
Okay.
They follow what you just said.
It's a complete closure.
Council chair. I'm sorry, I need to understand Councilman Saab's point. So which curb you want to close, the one on John Daly?
The one, the first one on John Daly, right off of Ford Road.
Off of Ford Road?
Yep, right next to the traffic device.
So basically, when they, okay, so when they.
You're supposed to be within 10 feet of a traffic device.
And I understand, so when they finish with the drive-through.
They go back on Ford Road?
They have to go back on Ford Road?
Yes.
And force them right.
Force them right only.
And you can't turn left. I think all the businesses on the road.
Right to the, right to the.
Should be forced right. I live across the street. I, I live on Behind Target, and let me tell you. When I go to turn left and a car leaving Dearborn Fresh is going left to go west and I'm going to go east, guys, I promise you it's a war zone. I promise you it's a war zone.
No, I agree with you, council chair. I, 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 you know, this is the, this is the, the situation we're in. We can deny it, you can put a condition that says get rid of the first driveway, whatever. But this is the, that was the plan that was approved by the city five years ago. I'm, I'm just saying.
Council chair.
I'm going to let go Councilman Wenzel, Councilman Constan, and then we're going to do Councilman Saab and we're done, we're just voting on it.
Thank you. You know, I, I recommend we deny this and then look into it further for other sites because we could talk about all kinds of ideas tonight, thousands of ideas. Let's just deny it and look into it, have, I don't know, whatever you want.
I mean, guys, the mayor's not supportive of this. Why would we be supportive of this? And this is, me and the mayor agree right now. I'm actually so happy how much we agree today. I can't believe it. I mean, he's smiling, I'm smiling. Who would have thought me and the mayor fronts today?
I, council chair, I'd like for.
Well, let Councilman Constan to go first.
Oh, sorry.
Just to echo what Councilman Saab is saying, maybe we can refer it back to the planning commission for further modifications for the very important issue of the traffic flow.
Council chair.
Yep, Councilman Saab.
So, Mr. Bazey lives, takes John Daly every day, believe it or not. So, so he's on the planning commission. If that first curb car is, is closed, a lot of the traffic issues would be resolved.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and, and I support businesses, but with that curb, like I said, I live on John Daly, you turn left, I sometimes got to go to Amboy to turn back to come, come on John Daly.
I got stuck behind people backed up out of the driveway and I'm stick, I'm stuck making a left off of Ford Road.
Into traffic.
So I've done that, in traffic.
So I'm, I'm going to tell you guys a quick story before we go ahead and make this vote, but my first ticket was on John Daly. It was former police chief Lee Gavin. And I didn't have my license on me, I was driving my brother's Lincoln, I just got ahead like this. I had my hair looking like Councilman Ahmad, believe it or not, it was just curly. And, and I didn't have my license on me, and I was so nervous, he said, go, I said, I live around the block, please. And you know what I did? I was speeding to get to my driver's license, he pulled me over the second time and said, what are you doing? And, you know, and it was Chief Lee Gavin, honest to God. And I want you guys to know, regardless, the moral of the story is, regardless of what we do on John Daly, it was always, it was always one of the most busiest streets in Dearborn Heights. And, and, and I say this because Chief Lee Gavin, former Chief Lee Gavin, wrote so many tickets that one day Channel 7 did a story about the, the captain, he wasn't the chief, the captain that gives tickets on Cecile and John Daly. And if you didn't stop for three, four seconds, guess what you do? You got, even if you stopped for three, four seconds, he'd give you a ticket. How do you think he became the chief? But, but, but the moral of the story is, John Daly's always been busy.
Yeah.
And if you're not closing down that side like the Councilman Saab is saying, you're just adding more traffic. You got, you got our respective people in our community, like Mr. uh, Mr. Bazey that's no longer taking John Daly. I, I mean, he's sure taking Beach Daily.
He's taking a detour.
Beach Daily to Wilson, Wilson to Sheehan. I mean, that's what I would do because we're neighbors.
We got detour signs.
But, but I, I, I'm going to have to say, this is something that I'm going to agree with the mayor on. And I'm going to vote no on this, so here no other discussion.
Council chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I do agree with Councilman Saab, maybe we can table it, send it back to a corp. council, maybe add that condition, but I have a couple more questions. I know it says here low intensity use tenant, can we give them like maybe a list of businesses that can go in there, like with?
They, they have a, a business already.
In mind?
To go in, yes, they have a client ready to go, they're waiting for us. And that's clothing.
Promoting store?
Like a gown store. It's already signed with them, that's the pressure, I guess, that they're.
So I figure it goes in there and six months down the road, doesn't work, they are a business, and now we're the same dilemma all over again.
Well, they still have to follow the, the conditions that the MOU.
Maybe we can put maybe a list of businesses that we agree on. And my second question is, number six, it says such approval shall not be unreasonably withheld. Define unreasonably, like.
Well, if you have the list of businesses that you approve, that you're not going to come out with something out of, out of the ordinary. If, if, safety is, 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 is normal.
I saw you.
You know, and the, the, the volume of traffic, if, if it's, if you've got a reason to, that's not something that makes someone say, really? Reasonable is reasonable.
And there's, is there like assigned parking spots for that location from the parking?
Yeah, we went through all with the, with the Starbucks and the, actually, we went through the chicken store that was coming.
Yeah, the chicken, the chicken was problematic because of the, you know, the, the intensity of, of uses. And, and of course, it's a, you know, fast food and, you know, it's more turnaround. But low intensity users such as seamstress or, or gown shop, or we even suggested tax place. But the issue with the driveway is an issue, it, it's an issue even without the second business, even with Starbucks alone, it is an issue. We, we all seen it.
I don't believe they could get.
You said, you mentioned that there was two driveway approved?
On John Daly, there are two. You can look at.
Like two, there are two businesses, like two driveways?
No, no, two driveways for the Starbucks.
For the Starbucks, I for one, okay.
Why don't, why don't, why don't they ask the Harani's to sell their house, offer them a crazy number, turn it into a parking lot? We need to be more creative, more closing down things, turn it.
Oh, we, we, we've been, no, this is, we've been creative. We, we tried to get, I think they tried to get the neighbor to open up their parking spaces, they couldn't get anywhere with their neighbor to open up and help with that. So it was sort of blocked on that.
Because they were short too, so.
Guys, we're going to, we're going to take this to a vote, and then if, if it doesn't pass, bring it back with maybe some stipulation or reach out to some of the council members. But hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye. Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Madam clerk.
Hassan Ahmad?
No.
Moby Dune?
No.
Nancy Brier?
No.
Robert Constan?
No.
Hassan Saab?
No.
And Tom Wenzel?
No.
Motion defeated.
All right. Council chair. Yes.
Roger, what would you think about referring it back to the planning commission with the, you know, additional, so we don't end up in a lawsuit with the additional, or it'll go back to the planning commission anyway? I think they're on the edge of filing a lawsuit because they've lost so many businesses already. That's why we brought it up to get as much input as we can.
Me, I, I, Councilman, it doesn't have to go to planning commission. If you had approved this, why? It's already been to the planning commission. There is no physical change to the site whatsoever. So it is, it is an issue with trying, they, they're telling us we're trying to do what we have approval to do.
I, I mean, can you just go back and ask if they'll close the first curb? I'll support it.
I could, absolutely. We'll put that in writing, make it a condition, absolutely.
Right, 100%. It's just mathem, I mean, you guys said you did two study sessions, our traffic studies.
Yeah, no, we, we know.
And what did the study, traffic study show?
So I, we can say.
Council chair. Guys, you made a vote on this one, I want to continue on with this agenda, please, guys. Next up, we have ordinance and resolutions 11A, engineer.
I apologize.
City engineer Debe, it's okay. First reading for proposal ordinance H-24-01, adoption of chapter 40 dash post-construction stormwater management.
Council chair.
Councilman Saab.
I moved that the Dubonight City Council moved that proposed ordinance H-24-01 and ordinance of the city of Dearborn Heights to amend the code of ordinance to, at chapter 40, post-construction stormwater management be considered, reading for the first time as outlined in 11A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Mr. Debe, thank you for being up there. Any discussion?
Council chair. I had a couple residents actually call and see, they wanted me to ask you guys if you just skip, you know, putting it back on agenda again, do the first and second reading today. Again, they just wanted you guys to, to know that, you know, a couple residents wanted actually to see if there were a way to do the first and second reading. Again, it's up to you guys, I just wanted to relay the message.
Who are the residents?
I got their names if you want.
Council chair. I'm sorry. Were you going to give the names or not? I'm sorry.
No, no, I don't have them with me right now.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, this is message of, I mean, you guys can do a first reading, it's up to you guys.
I'm sorry. Mr. Debe?
Yes, sir.
Can you, can you explain to our residents, you know, post-construction storm management?
Okay, glad you asked. Councilman, so just a background on this particular ordinance, this is not something that we came up with. This is Eagle mandated, the county of Wayne issues the permit for stormwater management. So any site that you construct, that is half acres or more, you have to, to, to pull a permit for stormwater management, whether you put a pond, outdoor, or underground storage, whatever. But that was a county function, and it's been that way for years and years. What happened as a result is that the maintenance of those devices were not included in the original ordinance to the county. So no one ever maintained them. As a result, we have issues, we're not the only one, we're actually better than some communities. Devices not maintained are neglected and they do not operate. Case in point will be the Walgreens on Beach Daly, which floods all the time because the device underground has not been maintained since the construction of that place. The, so the county replied back to the, to Eagle that they, they do not do the maintenance. So Eagle says, well, the communities have to take it over. They were very specific as the communities take over and pull ordinances to maintain those devices and actually issue citations to the people that do not comply. And so we went back to the county. This has been going back and forth. In fact, out of the 41 communities, Dearborn Heights and Lincoln Park are the only two that haven't adopted it. Everybody else adopted it because it is mandated, you can't change anything. So basically, the state is saying, after the permits are issued and the, the places are in service, the city will be responsible, they named the city engineer of, of course, or his staff, or designee, to, to provide inspection or to obtain compliance from the owners. Basically, they wanted to make sure that these devices are maintained, whether it's underground or above ground. The nuances, so I've been working with our corp. council, because obviously I don't have staff, and the, and the ordinance. If, if this becomes an ordinance, then it will be turned over to our officers, just like grease traps or anything, you know, that you have to provide compliance report every two years. And then basically, I went and visited some of the open ones, I didn't go underground, obviously, but some of them, like I heard some horror stories. The pond behind Target, I was there today, not good. It is not maintained, it hasn't been maintained. I don't know how old, old that place is, but it was neither the county nor the city. So that's, that ordinance, if it goes into effect, will give the, the city the authority to issue violations if you do not maintain it. And when it floods like Walgreens on Beach Daly, we just go back and say, you know, we need, you get a violation if you don't fix it.
So this means that the, the owner of the business will be responsible to maintain it. Like at Walgreens, for people that don't, I'm assuming there's all underground storage underneath the parking lot for water to be held and that's blocked up or some, somehow, and that's why it's flooding?
Yes, sir.
So it would force them to maintain that, clean it out or whatever they want to.
So this gives, this gives you the authority, or the city the authority to issue violation because you're, you're violating the ordinance. So adopting that ordinance as is, 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 really is our only, you know, stick. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Debe. Mr. Saab, are you okay with amending your motion to make this a first and a second reading?
Yes.
Okay.[1523.24] Well, then Mrs. Breyer, are you okay with seconding that?
All right. Well, I think this is something that needs to be done. I agree with, uh, what Mr. Deep said here. Hearing no other discussions. All in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
I had a brain fart. Those oppose?
The ayes have it, motion carries. Eleven B has been removed.
Hey, Officer Bez, you have a seat, man. I feel bad, you've been standing up for two hours.
Thank you, Mr. Deep. Thank you. Uh, next up, we have new business temporary food truck tent cart license renewal and application.
Council chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Durbinite City Council approved the temporary food truck tent cart license renewal for a saved meat on the go and the temporary food truck tent cart license application for Bay Rock Taco Truck as outlined in thirteen dash A.
Second.
Motion made by councilman Ahmad, seconded by councilman Conston. I just want to tell you guys real quick that this isn't a, uh, a new approval. They have been around. Uh, I believe this is just their third time being renewed. I know that they, I think they only do it during Ramadan and then I think they, they go away. So they're not always around. Hearing no other, uh, discussion, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, thirteen B, business license renewal for Famous Auto Center.
Council chair.
Councilman Saab.
I moved that the Durbinite City Council approved the business license renewal for Famous Auto Center at two five nine nine six Van Born as outlined in thirteen B.
Second.
Motion made by councilman Saab, seconded by councilman Ahmad. Uh, any other discussion?
Council chair.
Councilman, uh, Wenzel.
Um, I, I went by this place and, uh, they, they, they sell cars there. I don't know if they have a used car license. Are they licensed to sell cars? Yeah. Okay, it's a renewal. Okay, but, um, I went on Facebook and I don't know if we do this for businesses, but there were so many bad comments about this place. I mean, it, it may, maybe it was just the only bad was they do a lot of good. But, um, it seemed like the, the business, you know, every, a couple of people I talked to down the street, I know of another business, really nice business down the street that said they had some bad feelings about this guy. Um, not to say, you know, it's true or not, but how, how do we investigate these things? Just because they paid their water bill and is their water bill paid up? Everything's paid up? Yeah. I mean, I mean.
Do they have any house landing ordinance tickets against them?
That's what I wanted to find out, if there's been any complaints, you know?
If there's complaints.
Better Business Bureau, do we ever check stuff like that?
Yeah, you can call ordinance before the meeting, but I think Director Dishroom does check that before it comes. It's not part of the process. The only thing part, part of the process is their water bill and their delinquent personal property taxes before they get, um, can renew.
You know, I mean, this is just, this is another used car lot case. Renewing the license.
It's a renewal, right?
And I mean, do we have the authority to not renew their license? I mean, th- these kind of things, this, this on Van Born corridor, this is, you know, you, you count all the used car sales spots on Van Born compared to the ones on Ford Road. How many are on Ford Road?
I'm gonna entertain you for a second on this one. I'm gonna entertain you.
But, you know, I'm just saying.
Cause the clerk's like, what, what's going on? It's a renewal. But I'm gonna tell you, I'm, I'm gonna entertain you on this a little bit.
I'm just saying, you know, what, what, what authority do we have to turn this down?
Well, let, you actually have, you have the power, believe it or not, after, cause I've been reading our charter deeply the last couple of weeks. Just cause I want to understand the power of the council. Man, let me tell you, right now you put this down, guess what? They're not getting a renewal. You have that power, but I'm gonna tell you something. They also have, uh, I'm gonna use the car wash that happened on Ford Road. You're gonna go to litigation. You have a guy like Azam Alder that's gonna stand here and his exact words to us, I mean, this was, you know, i- it was amazing, this attorney when he spoke, this litigating attorney. And he plugged his nose. He said, if you don't like the smell of it, live somewhere else because this is America. And if they meet all the requirements.
Oh, I know, yeah.
And so that car wash was approved based on, and that attorney, not to say that I'm for or against this car wash, I'm saying the attorney that fought it, litigated it so well. And he looked back at the residents who were opposing it and said, if you don't like the smell of it, plug your nose, too bad. You have the authority to deny this. We all have this authority to deny this. But if we do, um, and we go to court and then we spend this money, the grant, the court's gonna come back and grant them and say, well, they've been here, they've met all the requirements. If someone wrote something bad about them on Facebook, I'm just entertaining you.
I know, I know, I know.
If some, if somebody wrote something bad on, on Facebook or on Yelp or on this, that's great, don't go there. Uh, but that's not enough for us to say they're not allowed to be in our city.
I know, I know that. I was on the planning commission, we hear the same issues that they met all the criteria you, you actually had to give them. But how about if we table this and I'll personally look into some matters? If there's something I, I find bad, we can bring it back to city council. What is their license expire?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you look for that and I'm just gonna let you know.
I don't have the backup on that.
Um.
It's on my computer, but.
Famous Auto Center.
April fourth? So they got, they got over a month. We got a couple more meetings before May April fourth.
So what is it that you're gonna find that you want?
Let me look into, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna take it upon myself, you know, you know how I feel about used car lots? Anytime there's a used car lot pro, issue in Durbin Heights, I would take them upon myself to investigate.
You know, I'm gonna honor that for you if the council wants to, cause that, that is a democracy. So if the majority, the mayor go. If the ma, if the ma, majority, um, wants to do that, I mean, I don't know. I'm gonna tell you, I'm not for that, but I will do it for you. So if the, if Famous Auto Center is watching this right now, I'm all for you being a business. I'm gonna let the councilmen.
You sound just like David Abdullah right now.
Look, you know.
And see if there's any ordinance violations.
That's a, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
I mean, thank you, council chair. Madam Clerk, I mean, didn't, Madam Clerk, didn't all the homework been done on this? Like, is there any tickets, any violation? Everything's been paid? Who checks like before it comes here?
We check water and delinquent personal properties.
Well, I mean. Microphone, microphone, Madam Clerk.
We check delinquent wa, or delinquent, or for water, delinquent water and delinquent personal property taxes.
So this doesn't go through ordinance or building, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Let's just check on it. They've got, they've got over a month, two, two or three more meetings before the derivative license expires.
Council chair, let's table, put on a second meeting in March.
Yeah, I'm, you know what? I mean, I, it's gonna have to go back to Saab and, uh.
I'm on my motion.
Okay.
I support.
Okay. Motion to table, uh.
Or when, when is the next meeting?
March twelfth.
The twelfth.
March twelfth, please put on the March twelfth meeting.
Table to the March twelfth meeting.
Yep. And then motion, so do you mind your motion to keep, to move it to the March twelfth? Do you support that?
Support.
I just wanna add, I just wanna add one last thing. From, from what I know, you have to find a hefty investor to say, hey, we wanna buy you out and turn it into something else.
I, I know, but I mean, yeah, I'm, you're, hopefully this guy's on the up and up and everything. I'm not saying anything bad, but I'm saying, let's, let's check on this, cause I, I'm passionate about used.
You know, I'm for that. You know, and, and I just, I wanna make it clear to, if, if anybody at home or anybody's watching this, the councilman is not targeting a specific person or even car dealerships. He's just saying he wants best for the, you know, Van Born corridor.
Exactly.
And, uh, you know, he doesn't want any eyesores. And guess what? Who knows? He might drive by there tomorrow and there is an eyesore and they didn't get a violation. Maybe they need to be up to code, you know? Um, but, okay, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion fails.
Councilman Wenzel always.
Tabled.
Tabled.
To be tabled.
Tabled.
Councilman Wenzel always watching.
Next up, uh, we have, uh, members of the public, comments from council members. There is our mayor. Uh, how you doing, mayor? We're, we're gonna let you start off with today with, uh, comments from, uh, from the council and, and the administration. I'm gonna start it off with the mayor today. Yeah? Yeah, I'm feeling, I'm feeling great today.
Well, I'm gonna thank, uh, Sergeant Stevens for being here today and also Officer Bezzy. As you guys see when you walk into the city hall, you know, I started doing something with, uh, uh, recognizing employees. So we asked for input from, uh, directors and also the both, uh, police and fire chief, uh, to ask him for, uh, somebody that went way and beyond. And, uh, Officer Bezzy, he's been, uh, recognized, you know, for, for this quarter, for the, has the most DUIs and is trying, keeping the DUI drunk.
Isn't that, I think he's got the most DUIs in the state of Michigan.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, that, yeah, two years in a row.
Yeah.
Violation.
Yeah, not personally.
Yeah, most DUI violations.
And this is very critical in the city, obviously with all the stuff with the safety, that our residents, you know, I mean, is, 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 uh, our priority. And, uh, keeping drunks off the street, you know? Thank you very much for doing that. And, uh, you guys risking your life also on the road, especially working at night, you know, with the crazy stuff going on. So, uh, I, kudos to you guys, thank you. Uh, the other thing is, uh, I was in a meeting with, uh, DCC, you know, when we talk about the Ekor's Creek, you know, I know, uh, um, Mr. David Kinesik mentioned, our commissioner, uh, but what's going on with, uh, Ekor's Creek? There's also another initiative that we're working on. So this is an issue with all the DCC communities with the Ekor's Creek, obviously with, uh, it's flooding a lot of, lot of communities. And, uh, so we, they had a company that actually came in, we had, we had a meeting in Chicago last year and, uh, there's, it's part of the St. Lawrence Cities Initiative. And, you know, I brought up the issue, you know, about the creek, you know, one of the things that you get people's attention, when, uh, I actually talked to also, uh, not just Eagle, but went on a federal level, saying, you know, that the issue is not just so much the flooding as much as everything that goes into the water. You know, when you have flooding in, in the areas, so the water goes into the garages, there's, uh, toxic chemicals in their garage and it goes into the water, it goes into the lake, you know? That was something that, uh, people actually didn't really discuss that. So I was in DC also last week, I'm sorry, last year and will be next week as well, you know, try to advocate for more funding, you know, for the Ekor's Creek. And, uh, one, one of the things that, that they have this company called Stentech. So Stentech does stuff with the St. Lawrence Cities Initiative. That's every, every city around the Great Lakes, both US and Canada. So they have over three hundred and fifty mayors bought this initiative. And one of the things is they, uh, they agreed to send this company called Stentech to Michigan. And, uh, we met with them, uh, we had it at the DCC conference and they, they actually took, uh, an interest in the Ekor's Creek. And, uh, so instead of, you know, I, I mentioned a little bit about it, you know, a few, a few months ago. So now what they did is, you know, I know everybody's sick of studies. You know, everybody says studies, studies. So what they did is they went, grabbed every study that's been done on the Ekor's Creek, every study for the last sixty years. And they, uh, they combined, uh, combined it all in one. And, uh, if you guys remember about a year and a half ago, we got, uh, one point five million dollars in design, uh, from both Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib and also Congresswoman Debbie Dingell. So that money goes actually to the design work, not studies. So they're actually now in the design phase. So what they're trying to do is that they wanna build a basin as we talked about. So they're working on trying to do a design so it be shovel ready. So once they get that, then Stentech and a couple other company, you know, initial, uh, um, funding scouts, they're gonna try to help us, uh, get the funding. And they're estimating it's gonna be between twenty to thirty-five, twenty-five to thirty-five million dollars to put a basin off of Powers and Inkster. So this is gonna really help us, uh, help the residents in the area with the flooding. And they estimate actually it's gonna be about eighty, eighty-five percent, you know, uh, less water that will go through the Ekor's, uh, Ekor's Creek. And, uh, that's gonna really help us a lot, you know, in that area. So, uh, more, uh, more to come later. Once we get the design work, you know, uh, then we're gonna probably, uh, go, uh, do a press release on it and share with the council. Maybe, uh, I'll have.
Be sure with the council before you do the press release?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And we're, 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 we're making the real over here in Durbin Heights.
No, no, it's, so you guys, you guys will know, once we get the design work, I'm gonna see if Stentech can stay, uh, come in for, for a couple hours at least to Durbin Heights and explain, maybe get all the communities together and do like a town hall meeting with, uh, all the communities around the Ekor's Creek, just to talk about, see what, what they're doing part of the design. So this is gonna really help not just, uh, Dearborn Heights, but every, every community will be downstream from the, from the Ekor's Creek.
That, that is great news. Thank you so much for that.
No, no problem. And I think one of the things that some residents, you know, have asked, you know, I just wanna make sure, uh, I clarify, you know, uh, people are saying, you know, why, why don't we start with Dearborn Heights, you know, with, uh, with cleaning the creek? You know, that's gotta be, if you, if you see actually, if you try to do that in this area here, you know, that, then you're gonna give other communities issues. So what we're trying to go is from downstream all the way upstream, uh, all the way up to Ramulus. And, you know, they're part of the DCC as well. So they do have a good plan and, you know, I know somebody mentioned, you know, Commissioner Kinesik talked about, it's going out for bid, you know, for companies to actually, uh, they're gonna do it in phases. So there's a company, they're gonna put out for bid and, uh, these companies will just work at these segments. So, uh, right now, I don't think we're, they're gonna get into Dearborn Heights till probably the end of this year. But, you know, they'll, depending on how the companies pro, progress, uh, with cleaning the creek, you know, with not, you know, and again, they're not gonna widen it, but again, they're gonna take the sediments. And if you see the sediments and pipes, uh, it's more than half four, uh, half sediments. So that's what's causing the water, uh, to flow into the streets because they can't get into the creek. Anyway, uh, but if anybody has any issues, they can reach out to us. But I'm hoping Stentech will come in, uh, probably within the next, you know, maybe couple of months, once they finish design, not study, design.
Thank you.
Of that.
That's, that's great news, man, mayor.
I thank you, thank you.
Mr. Deep, I did let the mayor go before the council.
Fine. I just wanted to add, um, to what the mayor had indicated.
Hang on real quick. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna allow the council, the council's okay with it.
Yeah, sure.
You guys okay with it?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Deep.
Okay, just wanted to add one more, uh, good news as the mayor indicated on the, uh, money that we received for the design, um, Monday about three days ago, the Corps of Engineers contacted us, so I'll be coming to you, that's the first contact I've heard for the, um, um, site access, so the actual field, um, dis, uh, surveys of the incinerator site. And I'm very anxious to get them on site so that they can start, do the topo. And, uh, that's the preliminary engineering before you can design the pond. So it is, it is working and it's on multi-front. So in addition to what the mayor indicated, that big, and also working with the county because these are interim, the real solution, the long-term solution is the detention and it is the Corps of Engineer.
Thank you so much.
It's moving.
Yeah.
The, this, this money to pay for this, is it, that money given to the city of Dearborn Heights and do we have it or is it one of those things where we have to spend it and then they reimburse us?
Well, I think he just said he's gonna, they just reached out to him. So they're, I think they're in the beginning stages.
That's the design. The money was given for, so what you get is, you don't get cash on any of the grants. You get approval with a certain number, not to exceed. So you go out and work with that and this money wasn't given to us. The check was given to the mayor, but the approval went to the Corps of Engineers, the army. So they have that approval. They, they, they do progress work and submit to the agency for reimbursement. That's how it works. But I didn't see the cash, it's them.
Is this, is this money restricted? Is it a res, I mean?
You can't use it for anything else.
You can't use it for anything else, right?
No.
No.
Oh, good.
Thanks, you guys. All right, next up, we have comments from council members.
Council chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
Since I have Mr. Deep here, do you mind if I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Can you give us update on the master plan for the city?
So, um, as you know, we had gone out last year, um, um, and received, uh, we put an RFP on the street and received three proposals. We selected one, we did not award the contract because during that time, we also received words from our, um, uh, grant scout that, um, uh, you can't get reimbursement. So the effort, the multi-year effort's going to be expensive because we are not doing an update. My budget was for an update, but we don't need an update. We need a brand new master, uh, plan. Cause what, the last update we had was two thousand and seven and they're only good for five years and they can't update a dead master plan.
What, what do we, we approved an update?
Yeah, we don't have an update. We're doing a brand new master plan.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, we, we.
We approved a new.
What stage are we at?
The, um, uh, the way we procured it internally with an RFP is not federal procurement. It has to be a qualification-based procurement in order to get reimbursed by the Fed. So I do have possible venue to pay for it other than us, but we need to rebid the project as a qualification-based bid. So we have to re, go, go back out to bid. It may be the same company, but you can't put a, a price. It has to be qualification-based bid, RFQ. And that's what we're currently doing. So, um, I have an RFQ written for professional services, uh, per federal guidelines, which will then cover all the grants that we all know about, the grants that we receive, because a lot of them are federal. So what I can't do with federal is use a proposal with a price. I need to put a qualification-based. We finished that, uh, it's being reviewed now, so it'll be coming back to you once I get a qualification-based. So the way it works, you put a qualification-based out and you select a consultant and then you negotiate a price. But you have to be basing it on the qualification, the best qualified, uh, designer. So that's what we're.
You negotiate with one.
One at a time. So if you do not, so you pick the best. And if you can't reach an agreement with number one, then you move on to number two. And if you can't, you, so that's how the federal guidelines work. And that was the reason why we did not award it last year, because it wasn't qualification-based. It's something that the city has never done, cause we've never used federal money.
Thank you, Mr. Deeb. And I remember in the budget season, we approved the GIS.
Yes.
What's, what's update with that one?
So, as you know, yes, we do have a GIS, so we wanted to, to develop a job description. And so we internally, I'll, I'll take the blame for that one, because I'm trying to get internal, so the, the, my, my piece of the GIS part is I wanted to be able to get all the records that the city paid for with our consultants, mainly, you know, Waitram, back into the city and, and, and keep them updated. But I'm not the only users of that position. So you've got building, for all the building work, you have the assessor's office, you have many, you know, real estate, we don't have a real estate or properties, but there are the users. So it's, it's internal, we're trying to come up with a job description so we can get the best candidate that we can satisfy him. But, but, you know, I'll be, I'll be using them quite a bit. But now that I became an employee this month, I will be doing that actively.
Should we, should here be soon hiring somebody?
Yes, we need, we need one, definitely. We do.
Cause I think I, I know the assessment department is in need of.
I work closely, yes, sir. I work closely with the assessor and yes, we agree on a lot of stuff, but whoever we pick has to have all these, the engineering background, the survey.
Yeah.
We, we have, we, it will be a busy, busy position.
Thank you, Mr. Deeb.
Yes, sir.
Since we're talking about the assessors and the assessment department, the tax assessment's been, I think that they're on their way. And whoever wants to appeal their taxes, they're on March 18th through the 20th. Make sure you go online, fill the application, submit it to the assessor's office and hopefully you can appeal your taxes through those things. And again, one more time, would like to acknowledge Black History Month and thank all African-American for their contribution to the city and to this country. Take it, Councilor Chair.
Councilwoman Breyer?
Yes, I'd like to make an announcement. I'd like to thank our HR Director, Margaret Haslett, Kim and the Parks and Recreation. We now have a full-time coordinator starting on March 11th at Eaton Center. Josie has been approved. So I just want to let everybody know it's next week.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'm gonna start mine off real quick, keep it brief. Quick meeting, I'm glad, I'm glad I'm seeing you here at 8:50, it may not seem like it's quick, but guys, I think, I felt like this was pretty smooth today. I was at City Hall two days ago and I, you know, I run into a good friend of mine and he said, hey, you know what, the assessor is a little upset, she's hearing rumors that you and the council want her gone and you want her replaced by an Arab-American. And I was blown away. And I just wanna make something very clear. I've never requested for any position to be filled by, by a sect or a color, somebody's skin or a race or ethnicity or a religion. And so I said, what are you talking about? And so I opened the door of the assessor's office and I said to everybody that was there, there was only three people, the director and two staff members, I said, whomever the liar is that said I said one, two and three is a coward. Because that's not my character, that's not who I am. I'm glad that I'm able to address it tonight here, because if Kim is watching, I did not say those words. I never even thought those things. To be honest with you, I think there's so much going on in the city and on my day-to-day that I, I, I truly, I, I respect the assessor's office and all the hard work, but it's not the first thing on my mind. And for, so anybody to make such a false accusation or a pure lie is a coward and cowardly. She wouldn't, you know, tell me who the individual was, but I continue to reiterate to everybody in there is that that person that lied to you is cowardly. And so that's all I really have to say. Because I would never, ever be, I'm not one to ever be a racist, I will never be a racist. I, and that's not who I am in my heart. I, I'm gonna say, speak for myself, I'm a very good human. You know, I fear God and really, I was bothered, I was so bothered. And it was said specifically that I, me, Mobe Dun, want our assessor gone. I think our assessor's doing a phenomenal job. And to set the record straight, I've never once said that. So thank you, Kim, for all the hard work that you do and your staff. And those words never came out of my mouth. And then finally, just some closing remarks. I'll be turning 34 before our next meeting. And so, you know, really at 34 years old, two kids, beautiful wife, amazing dog, you know, being up here in council with some great colleagues, you know, I, I really, if I was to plan my life out, I wouldn't see myself sitting in the seat. And I'm blessed for every single one of you guys here today that are watching at home and, and helped get me to where we are today. I thank each and every single one of you guys. I'm so grateful for Councilman Ahmad. I know I used to talk about how much I used to like lean on Councilman Abdullah, and really I've been doing that to Councilman Ahmad so much to that where his wife is like, stop answering your phone. And really, he is a true, you know, inspiration to me, I think to many of us here on this council. If you guys don't know, Councilman Ahmad, this man is amazing. He goes above and beyond for his community, he does his due diligence. Like if I tell him, you know, my shoelaces are white and they're really red, he's gonna check to make sure my shoelaces are, you know, white and not red. Cause the man does his work. And so if you wanna know what kind of individual we have on council, we have somebody that goes above and beyond and we're lucky to have this man.
Hajj, Councilman.
Hajj, Councilman, yes.
Ahmad.
And that's all I have. Any other council members?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Saab.
Just wanna put out a few comments. I've been in contact with Chief Brogan from the Fire Department about our ladder truck. And I made contact with the repair shop that's been there for two years and just to give an update on it, the truck should be here early next week. It's complete, so good for the Fire Department.
Good job, Councilman, I like that. Stopping it up.
I also spoke to our state rep, Aaron Burns, about the Fire Department's grant that we got for the new Fire Department trying to build. If I can get Mr. Deeb to give us update or bi-weekly updates, where is that, where they, where we are in the process, cause there are benchmarks set on those grants.
Yep, so we're in the siding place, we're trying to side that. So I, we met with Fire Chief based on response time and we selected the area and we're looking at siding now, we're looking at.
So my question is to you, one of the areas you guys are looking at off of Warren and between Beach and, I'm sorry, on Beach Daily, between Warren and, and Joy.
Yeah.
I don't think that's, I think it's wetlands there, correct? If I'm not wrong?
Portions, yes.
Would the firehouse be suitable there? What's going on with the current firehouse?
If you prep it properly, yes, you can, you can do, you can, you know, you can prep it. Engineering, yeah, you can engineer it, absolutely.
If we can get emails bi-weekly on it, cause I, I'm, you know, I'm, I wanna make sure that, you know, that money, we, we can get that money and use it.
Okay.
I had another question for the mayor, I had a resident emailing me about a meeting in Taylor with the Taylor Mayor and she was asking about the fees that they have to pay to be there. Just thought, it was an email that was sent to me.
Councilor Chair.
Yep, Mayor.
It was set up by the Dearborn Chamber, so if you have any questions, they can reach out to the Dearborn Chamber, they're the ones who set this thing up.
Okay, now they just told me to ask about it. And then I'd like to ask the administration to bring back the traffic unit and the police department. We have unbelievable, unbelievable speeders in our neighborhood. I can literally tell you they go 80, 90 miles an hour down John Daly. There's at least an accident once a week on John Daly and cars getting T-boned.
May I respond? I've called to the chief.
Hang on, one second. You're gonna go through the chair, bud. I don't wanna be, I don't wanna keep doing that, but Roger, please, you gotta go through the chair. Councilman, are you done or do you wanna respond? And let him finish his.
Okay, I didn't wanna miss it, so.
Yeah, just, please.
My last thing is, is that I thought, I thought the council, a few years back, we put money on the side for the 911 dispatch center for equipment.
You can turn your mic, please.
For equipment stuff, didn't we?
I was thinking a few years back, but I know we tried to get some chairs for, for them and that.
Not the chairs, equipment, actual equipment.
No, I'm not.
I, I know, I'll, I'll check with.
$100,000, yes, I recall.
Right, so why are we requesting from the county money for nine, for the 911 dispatch center if we already got money allocated for it?
Okay, I'll, I do know that what we're gonna do in March is that we're doing a presentation on all the issues with the police department. We're gonna do it at the, at the Justice Center, the police headquarters in the room, we're gonna do a constant presentation. I will follow up with the question of the equipment that you're asking for, for 911, I'm sure there's an answer, but I will email it to you tomorrow once I hear from you.
Sorry.
Hang on.
Councilor Chair.
Let, let him finish his.
No, go ahead, go ahead, he can answer.
I wanna make a comment on the 911. So Commissioner Kenezic was talking about everything that we submitted a few years ago.
The ARPA money.
The ARPA money, yes. And with the, we wanted to see if we can get ARPA money, spend ARPA money instead of city money. So that's why we requested, we had over, about 12 different projects that we put on a list, shopping list, as you heard from the commissioner. So we had, we had a shopping list, we said, hey, county, they asked us for, to see what projects, you know, and priority that they want, they want. And we, we did submit that and yeah, 911 dispatch was one of them. So we wanted to see if we can get their ARPA money and ideally try to use somebody else's money instead of putting burden on our taxpayers. So that, that's what it was.
Thank you.
Councilor Chair.
That was a, that was a true. If I might.
Hang on, one second. Mr. Deeb, please, hang on one second, just let him finish.
It's just that our, I know our dispatch center is outdated and I mean, safety is not a burden on any resident, it shouldn't be a burden to any resident. I think we should, I thought it had gone out for bid or Verizon if.
May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Councilor Chair?
Yes.
So you're right, as the mayor indicated, in 2021, we provided a list to the county for the county's ARPA money and that project was one of them. We got denied on all of them except for the Ikurs Creek as part of a community. So out of the 12 projects, we didn't get any. That's why we came to the council for the design portion and you're right, it was awarded and we have the design underway. Twice, it came back and forth because the, the changes and, and the, and the product, the dispatchers requested, we had some issues with, with the products, they were no longer made. So it is, you awarded it after we requested it from the county. You're right, the county didn't give us anything. They just, they just approved 10 million out of 200 and some million dollars to, to be shared with all the communities on the Ikurs Creek. Now, I, I don't know how much of it is gonna make it to Dearborn Heights, but we'll continue to knock on every door.
I, I just wanna make a quick statement, if that's okay. Actually, go ahead, Mayor.
Also, I wanna add, so part of the CWW, they can get money also for dispatch. So we're talking to the CWW, the Conference of Weston Wayne. So they do have grants that we're talking to that, that entity to see if we can apply for, for those as well. So we're, you know, we, next probably a meeting or two, we're gonna present everything, all the grant money that we received and, you know, we're, we're, there's some matches that we have to come up with. So everything is gonna be spelled out and obviously we'll put that in front of the council for approval.
Thank you. I, I wanna say the 12, the 12 punchlines or things that we were asking to collaborate on, I, I like that we had these 12 things. I think the most important thing on here would have been the Ikurs Creek and I'm glad it's all going to the Ikurs Creek. Cause the 24 million is separate from the 10 million dollars that we received and I, and I know that's being split up by a bunch of other communities, but I'm glad that it's all ultimately going to the Ikurs Creek. I mean, I think every single one of us here wanted to go to the Ikurs Creek. So like, I know this, just looking here that he brings up, some house, I, you know, I, I know that this is something Mr. McCaffrey's really excited about. I'm okay with the dispatch center, if I'm spending $400,000, if we can get $10 million to go to the Ikurs Creek. Councilman, do you have any other comments? Are you done?
Actually, nope, one more thing, happy Black History Month to everyone. So also, we won't be here for the first day of Ramadan, happy Ramadan, everybody celebrating.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilman, Council.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. I'd like to thank our city engineer, Ali Deeb, for bringing to our attention, I know the retention basins are very important and I wasn't aware that, a lot of them, the mechanics and so forth have been not working and getting that ordinance to us and getting it passed, so it's very important. I think I join all of us in, in calling for an immediate ceasefire in, in Gaza and for an end to the shelling of.
Good job, Councilman.
Gaza and, and the people in the West Bank and in Southern Lebanon. You know, the United Nations passed a resolution calling for an immediate ceasefire and the United States vetoed the resolution. So we will all pray for and have our voices heard for a ceasefire and an end to the killing of women and children and civilians. And then I'd like to congratulate our colleague, Councilman Hassan Ahmad, for his recent pilgrimage to Mecca.
Thank you, Councilman.
I'm gonna go see the, the best for last.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. You know, some of the things that brought up why Mr. Deeb was standing there, I, I think we approved the 911 funding before the, it was contingent on ARPA money, I believe. That was something that we were gonna budget for in our budget and it went to the part, it went as far as go to the design phase where there's gonna be a new computer floor put in, a new ceiling tile, new all-electronic equipment and everything. So I mean, it's, this wasn't contingent on ARPA money, that was, that was something that was approved by city council to, to do. And I think it was 400, I mean, I can't, I can't remember the number, it was, it was enough to do the job. So, and I don't know what happened, maybe we can get, get on, get into that another time, cause he's been up here a long time. The location of the fire station, is that on the east course of the golf course?
Potentially, yes.
In, in that area, right in there? How many, how many acres are, how much land is?
It hasn't, we're, we're, we're siding it now to find out outside of the flood zone, how many, how much without impacting the golf course itself. It's being sited.
Okay, you got a couple more and you can please get a quick, so we haven't even started the master plan yet, we're still looking for someone to help us with it, right?
We're, we're, we're rebidding it, the same, but with qualification-based, yes.
Now, as far as the parking lot and the golf course goes?
Yes.
Was there, they're, they're, it's pretty damaged. Was there, was there a, did we obtain a performance bond from the construction work that was being done? A bond that would have money set aside for damages done to the parking lot with heavy equipment?
Talking about the building part?
Any part of the parking lot.
No, no, the, the construction of the building, is that, is that what you're referring to? I, I don't know, I'll have to ask the building department.
There was no, okay, because the parking lot on the east side, it was good enough condition, we, we had events there, we had, you know, music events and family car shows and now that's pretty tore up. I mean, it, it's obviously from heavy equipment.
Right.
So, you know, normally you obtain a, a performance bond from the people doing the construction.
Okay.
Okay, now, that's, that's all I've got to say about that, so thank, thank you so much for all you do.
No problem.
You know, I, I'm with Councilman Constance on the ceasefire, but let's not forget about the conflict in the Ukraine. There, there's senseless lives being lost there also and.
All lives matter.
All lives matter, that's right, thank you. I've got a couple of retractions. In a previous meeting, I stated Dana Paris was a city employee at the time, I made the statement, but I didn't know that he was no longer a city employee, I'm sorry to Dana about that. And I'm sorry to, to our deputy treasurer for referring to her as a girl today and I referred to Latonya Gater as, as, as a girl that in Dearborn Heights that does a lot of work, I'm sorry if I offended anybody, I, I meant nothing by it. And our Public Safety Commission, I hope we're gonna put them on the agenda sometime soon to give us a progress report. Even if they've done nothing, just say, hey, we've met and this is some kind of ideas we got. It's something that's really cool and important, I think, to the city. Yep, and we have our, our chairperson right up here. And we asked for, from Corporation Council, the minutes from a meeting that the decision-making was transferred from city council to the Planning Commission. And they stayed, you know, they stated it happens at such a time and we still haven't gotten anything on that. When, when was that, when was that passed? Yeah, you know, we, we, we need that, cause that, that's something, I think, those decisions, we wouldn't be in a lot of these situations we are now about the Starbucks issue if these, and worrying why is it coming to us, if these things came to us first. When I was on the Planning Commission, all we did, we didn't approve anything. We recommended for approval to city council or recommended denial to city council, we never approved anything. At some point, I don't remember, they said it happened while I was on city council and it didn't. And we've asked for it and we've, we've not, never got it, so I know Roger said he was gonna get that, I hope he gets that to us real soon. And speaking of Latonya Gater, Black History Month, you know, obviously Latonya Gater made black, black history here in Dearborn Heights. And I Googled black history, black people in the, in the country throughout the world that have made, you know, remarkable strides and it's amazing how many things that black people have done. I mean, Google it and check it out, you'll be really amazed. Joe Lewis was from Detroit and he was the longest reigning heavy, heavyweight boxing championship ever, longest reigning ever. And the very first black police officer came from Detroit. And there's all, all kinds, all kinds of great things, yeah. It's really, really fascinating, you, you know, you go, wow, really, you know, you know, the, so many things, but anyway. Get, to get back to one of my main things is the family, right? We're hosting a family fun night and we're in the process of getting a building permit for Annapolis High School, it looks pretty good. But we're, we're scheduling a family fun night on March 16th and it's gonna include open swimming, it's gonna include, uh, open gym, free food, free drinks, arts and crafts, photos. We have Home Depot Kids Workshop coming in, they're gonna set up and the kids and their families can make stuff and paint them. We're having pictures taken of the families and you make your picture frame for your family picture, all kinds of things. We, you know, we have the armed services coming in there, they got some things going on. We've got Aquatats, it's a swimming company for, teaches swimming lessons to little kids and the families. They're coming in, they're gonna give free presentations on, on children's swim and children's safety. It's a really great event. You go on my Facebook, you'll find about more about this, it's on there. And also Alexia Fredericks, Alexia Fredericks, her information's on there also. So great family activity coming up and we plan on doing it at Crestwood High School on the April 20th or 27th, we have, we nailed down a date yet, and at Robishaw High School too. We need sponsors and volunteer and everything, just look it, look it up on my Facebook.
You know what, I'm gonna recommend something, I'm gonna volunteer a good friend of mine, he's actually in the audience, Mo Cass. He is, we're gonna, we're gonna ask him to design a nice flyer for us, pro bono.
What, my flyer's that good?
I made it on Google Docs. Okay, so we got a thumbs up?
Thank you, Mo.
Yeah, okay, all right.
All right.
Good deal.
There you go.
Free of charge, there you go.
Councilor Chair, may I, may I just?
Just keep it quick, please.
No problem.
Can you respond, maybe in an email?
No, because I wanna put it on the record.
Okay.
March 7th, 2023, in response, I did give an opinion letter, it was sent to Pat Ray Muscat, Councilman Chair Dave Abdallah, Lisenya, which documented all that you asked for, the notes and minutes, plus my legal opinion of sending it from the Planning Commission to the City Council. I did draft an ordinance, which I included a sample ordinance for you. But it should be with the clerk's office because it was sent to the clerk's office, but I will resend it out to everyone.
I'll check right now.
Yeah, March, March 7th.
March 7th is my birthday, 2023.
March, yeah, that's when I sent it out. And I have a copy of it, it has all the attachments, the minutes from the 2007 vote, the HR statute that approved it, going to the Planning Commission, so I will resend it to you.
Thank you. I'm just, I know I left out a couple of things. Thank you to Councilman, I think Councilman Saab brought it up. A lot of Arab-American Muslims in the community are going to be observing on Ramadan as Muslims embark on this journey. Keep in mind that, you know, you're going to see a lot of the Muslim community that's going to be fasting from sunup to sundown. It's the ninth month in the Islamic Moon calendar, and, and, you know, you don't have any food until, you know, the sun goes down. So, you're going to start seeing a lot of businesses that'll be open later in the day. You might see a lot of traffic on Ford Road later at night. Maybe we can have administration, we reach out to our acting police chief to have more officers just, you know, up and down throughout the community. And then, you know, I'm just wishing everybody an amazing Ramadan. And also, since she's up here, our clerk did such a phenomenal job, guys. She works day and night. But I want you to know, it's not just the clerk, it's the staff inside the clerk, the fellows who volunteered day in and day out. I went pole to pole, and I saw some of our, you know, some of our seniors staying at a polling location from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I begged volunteers to do this for me, they were in high school and they said no. And so, the staff that you're able to organize is absolutely remarkable, the great work that George did while I was begging her to put something on while she was also working with some of our constituents, seeing the work that Dana did. You guys do a phenomenal job, Lynn and Madam Clerk. Really, I sincerely mean that. Dearborn Heights is lucky to have you ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now?
I'm going to keep this very short and sweet because I pulled an all-nighter. It's like the whole, practically the whole staff did. So, I'm going to come back with you and update you on, on the changes that happened this year with early voting and stuff at our next meeting. But from the bottom of my heart, some of our workers are here, and some are online. The staff is phenomenal, we're all very lucky.
And Councilwoman Breyer also did that as well, right? Thank you, Councilwoman.
We have some of our members here, and I know one of our rookie, Barbara Rennie's online.
Barbara is absolutely amazing, does a phenomenal job. I can't believe how you're able to, what do I have to do to get all these volunteers to help me out by next election?
That's a secret.
Oh, you guys get paid? I didn't know that.
Happy early birthday.
Thank you, thank you. Next up, we have announcements from the public.
Announcements or public?
Announcements, I'm sorry, announcements. Oh, do we have go to city officials? We'll go to city officials.
I want to stand up.
Well, you could sit there, you don't got to go up.
I just want to thank everyone who came to our ordinance seminar last Wednesday night. For the two hours, I think it was extremely informative and successful. We're planning a seminar in March, in March with the Police Department, and we're going to update with our statistics. So, we combined the legal fulfillment of what the police have, are putting together in increasing their enforcement with traffic, OWIs, operating while impaired, and speeding the reckless driving. I would add also, in April, we're looking for, to do an immigration seminar here, a free seminar. We want to include as well EB5 investments, since we have four council people that are real estate, that attracts
I'm not a councilman, I'm not, I mean, I'm not a real estate agent.
No, anyone with real estate, I'm sorry. But what it does is encourages investments of $800,000 to $1 million from overseas investors that would get, create 10 jobs, would get them a green card for them and their family, but it really builds up neighborhoods. It's called EB5, plus as well as other immigration questions.
Thank you. Any other announcements from, from city officials? Seeing none, we're going to go over to the public. Bezzi, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street you live on, Sheehan Highway.
I told the mayor I might put some barrels at the entrance. Officer Bezzi is a very good, was a very good soccer player, I used to be his coach.
And you were, and you were his neighbor?
My neighbor. Hassan Bezzi, Sheehan Highway. Aaron Bashnell. Aaron Bashnell, Aaron Bashnell. I don't know how many people heard of this young brave U.S. Air Force man, airman, set himself on fire in front of the Israeli Embassy in Washington to protest the genocide that is happening by the barbarian Israeli army that is supported by the American tax dollar, our tax dollar. Aaron Bashnell, Aaron Bashnell, Aaron Bashnell. Please remember this name, please remember the thousands, the hundreds of thousands of people are suffering, the millions. Imagine 2 million people are cornered in a place less than probably Sheehan, John Daly area, waiting for food to come from the sky, and the Israeli airplanes comes and bombed them, and they committed a genocide again today. This has been happening. Please go to the media, see what's going on in the Middle East, especially in Gaza and Palestine, and the genocide is happening. The babies are dying for the lack of food, milk. We're talking about the free world, we're talking about these hypocrites in Washington that, that, that sending the money, our money. We're talking about the mayor asking the City Council for 5%. I respect your decision today, that's fine, no problem. You know, 5% for us, for them to feed their family and to have a better life for them, you know? And what's going on, what we do, our tax money, we work hard for our money. You know, this is supposed to be for our kids going overseas to the criminals, to this Netanyahu that he is supported by Biden. I salute everybody voted uncommitted, just to send, it's a human thing, it's not about where we come from. You mentioned Ukraine. You know, innocent people are dying, what are we doing? Nothing, we're just sending our money over there. I want to say Aaron Bashnell, Aaron Bashnell, this brave soldier. I want to take my 30 seconds as a moment of silence for Aaron Bashnell and the, all the innocent people are dying, especially in Gaza, from the barbaric Israeli army. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council Chair. Thank you, Council People. Thank you for the city clerk. And please, let's work together to take this city to a different level. Thank you all.
Thank you. How you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street you live on.
I'm back. That's Strapkowski, Columbia Street. Thank you for staying, Mr. Mayor, and giving us an update on Yecor's Creek. I look forward to hearing more from Santak, especially if you could get them to come out here and give us a better idea of what's going on. One of the gentlemen asked if we were going to put back the traffic control or the traffic division. What about our narcotics division? Last week, there was a raid from Detroit in Dearborn Heights, they took $1 million. All that money went to Detroit. We could have had half of that money, and we could have used half of that money towards our dispatch. So, without a narcotics division, we are also losing out on money and allowing more drugs into the streets of Dearborn Heights. Okay? How much drug forfeiture money is paying for the Narcan machines? So they can go out there and keep reusing? So, are we going to rebuild our police department? Are we going to have another traffic division? Are we going to have another narcotics division? Are we going to have another investigation division? Detectives? Is that in the near future? Mr. Mayor?
I'm going to have you finish all your questions.
That is my question.
You don't have to answer your question?
Yes.
Pause this time, please. You don't have to respond if you'd like to respond, you're welcome to respond.
I have, we actually, you know, as we've been sharing for the last several, at least couple of years, we have Department of Justice, the DOJ, which is the cops, you know, cops' office from Washington, D.C. They were just in Dearborn Heights just this week. And again, they'll be coming in the next couple of weeks. And we have a lot of great things, you know, that they're doing. You know, we sent few officers for training in Colorado at their expense, and we're sending some more to, I believe, Baltimore? Yeah, Baltimore, several officers will be going to Baltimore again at the expense of the cops' office, the DOJ. So, there's a lot of, a lot of great things that we're getting from the DOJ, and these are the experts in law enforcement. And they're putting a good plan together for the, to move our city police department into a world-class police department.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street you live on.
Margaret King, Mayfair Street, Dearborn Heights. I've been coming here for years about public safety after Joey, losing Joey. I cannot thank you guys enough for denying and having a revamping of the Starbucks on Ford Road and Gully. Caleb plays hockey. Thank you. Caleb plays hockey, driving him and picking up his buddy to go to the rink. I've never been so scared trying to get through there. Public safety is a huge concern in our city. And with that, and thank you, Mayor, for speaking up against that. I couldn't be more proud of my city right now for that. It means the world to me and for everybody else in our community as well. Thank you, Nancy, for announcing the Eaton Center Director. That was on my notes to list off today. And I do have a question about the water grant. Did we hear anything about that? The water, the water grant, have we heard anything about that? No? Okay, all right, I just want to reiterate that.
I know you sent it to me, too, right?
Yeah, so, I just wanted to know if we have an update on that? Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other comments from residents?
Council Chair? Margaret King brought us a proposed or an optional grant application that was due. Did we act on that at all? It was the March 11th, I think it was, or something, March something? Are we acting on that, or are we looking into that?
Yeah, Mr. Deeb said he's acting on it.
All right, thank you. Sorry, Rachel.
Oh, it's okay.
Bye, Rachel.
That's fine.
Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street you live on.
Rachel Laplante, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. So, two random comments and a question. So, first of all, I'm proud to have joined with the 48% of us who voted uncommitted. We edged out the current incumbent, and I'm proud of us for that because we're showing that we have a standard, and that's no genocide. And it seems like a very low bar, but you know what? We're, we're making that message heard, and I'm proud of us. I look forward to the day when I don't have to see any more babies dead on my Instagram. On a slightly, going in a totally different direction here. I've had a few people randomly ask me if I'm an employee of the city because they see me doing things, they see me getting out there, and they're asking me if I work for the city. And I just want to make it clear that I do not work for the city, I do not get paid anything, nobody pays me a penny to do anything that I do. It's my own time, it's my own money, that if I have to spend money on like something, that's what's going on. So, I just wanted to make that clear publicly because a couple of people brought it up and seemed a little weird to me. And then, as for a question, there's been a few things, the Coda Group thing on the claims, and then a couple of other things. Mr. Mayor, you've mentioned that we've gone out for bids on them, but there are things that are not on BidNet. So, I was just curious for those specific items, like Coda Group specifically, where did we go out for bid? Was it posted on a certain website? Because I know we've got bids on our website now, the same ones that are on BidNet, I think that's awesome, like, really great, good job to Mr. Cooper making sure that got on there. But I'm just wondering where those bids are getting posted or how they're getting made known to the public? Because if we're going out for bids and I can't find it on the internet anywhere, that kind of is surprising. So, that would just be my question, is where those are getting posted?
Alter time, please. Mayor, do you want to answer that?
Council Chair? Yeah, normally we'll go on BidNet, but I'm not sure for the one for the police, I would have to check on that one.
I'll look into it.
Okay, and if somebody could follow up with me, I'd really appreciate that, thank you.
Actually, if they can follow up with all of us. Can you follow up with all of us on that? Mayor? Thank you. How you doing, sir?
Hey, guys.
I'm sure I know you live, and I think I know your name, but I was going to ask you.
I think so. Curse the point, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights.
All right.
Just a couple of quick things. For 8A, follow-up from this meeting, Councilman Ahmad, I had the same question you did. When I saw the request for an alternate, I thought it sounded like a good idea, but I didn't think it was really possible. But I was able to quickly find a Q and A from the state regarding the Boards of Review, really simple language explanations of the law. And yes, cities are allowed up to two alternates, they just have to follow the same requirements for terms. So, I encourage you all to look up that Q and A, I could even send it to you. It really details in a simple to digest and easy way to inform your requests and decisions in the future. Yeah. So, and then from follow-up from the last meeting, I just had a couple of questions. Has Council received the appropriate language from Corporation Council on the warrant violation revision yet?
No.
Okay. Any update on it all? Okay. Great, awesome to hear, thank you.
What did you say? Nothing, just let him continue.
And then, just the last one, have you received a complete breakdown of the ARPA money yet? And if not, is there an update on that one?
I can tell you that I was going to bother the clerk's office more than I could. I am definitely going to make that as a priority to the next meeting, maybe not on March 12th, but the following Tuesday. Because I know we have a study session, we do have a study session March 5th. We have a couple of closed sessions, a study session, and then March 12th will be a regular meeting, that following Tuesday, that's what I'd like to do. I want to go through the breakdown in detail of ARPA funds, what we've spent, how we spent it. I'm sure, you know, I have some of my notes, but let's do that for that date. What date is that? No, not the 12th.
Oh, the 19th, it's Monday after.
Do you know why, George? George is just on, you could tell.
I'm a little bit asleep, okay. Still recuperating.
Councilman Ahmad was buying food for dinner, if you don't want, don't worry about it.
Awesome, I'm all set then, that was it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Do we have any other comments? Shrubblehead, Goldmere Street. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street you live on.
Council, Ahmad, he's trying to stick you with the, paying for the dinner tonight, just to let you know. Zohair Abdulha, 354 Roseberry. I want to thank Councilman Bob Constant for bringing up and supporting the resolution for the ceasefire in Gaza. And I want to thank the City Council and everybody who supported that resolution because if we do not raise our voice, nobody is going to listen. And trust me, this vote of uncommitted, it's going to be, have an impact on the decision in Washington, especially by the President, Joe Biden. I have just some question about, was there any study how much it's going to cost to fix the fire station? If any study was done? Mr. Mayor?
Council Chair?
Council Chair?
Mr. Deeb, looks like he can answer that.
Council Chair?
Yeah, Mayor, go ahead.
Yes.
Messing up my thing.
Actually, to repair it was twice the amount to build it.
Was there any actual study by company?
Yes. There was a company, and also, in addition to fixing it, they would have to move the fire department or that station to another location, so that would have been an added cost. So, they came back with almost twice the amount to build a new station, I mean, to repair it than to build a new station.
Okay, thank you very much. And again, I want to thank the City Council for the vote on the salary increases. And I just want to give a little friendly advice. Mr. Mayor, that was good gesture to give the rate increases, it is due for all these people in the city. But just as a suggestion, I would recommend you sit with the City Council President and the Vice President and discuss these things, you know, from time to time. This way, when they come to the City Council, they will pass and there will be good understanding. And this will be in a positive direction for the city, and I hope we will continue that way. I'm very happy, tonight was very pleasant, and I'm happy to be here tonight, to be honest with you. The City Council is moving in the right direction, the administration hopefully is moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Any other comments? Great, let's go to Zoom, Madam Clerk. We have iPhone, he's got his hand up, I think it's the same individual from earlier. Let him know he's got three minutes. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street you live on. Okay. Mr. iPhone? Mr. iPhone?
I did, this is the fourth.
Okay, put his hand down real quick. If he can hear us, put your hand back up. No, it's off. Okay, moving on. Well, hold on. I'm gonna give him a couple of seconds. iPhone, if you can hear us, put your hand up.
He's not there on mute.
Okay, he's not there?
No.
I see him. And there we go. Okay, I'm gonna do it again. I just didn't ask.
iPhone, I think you need an Android.
I did, I did do it again.
We're gonna get sued for real, though. Apple's coming at us.
I hit it four times.
Another lawsuit.
Does anybody have an iPhone that can tell him how to unmute?
Mr. iPhone, Mr. Owen, if you can hear me, maybe, uh, can we do? Let us see your camera. Can you unmute?
I mean, I've done it four times. I'm gonna ask again. Let me see.
Okay, well, sorry about that, Mr. Owen. We're gonna, we're just gonna move on. We can't sit here waiting. I'm so sorry. Uh, any other, uh, any other people on Zoom? All right, hearing none. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman, uh, Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Yep, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Sorry, Mr. Owen.